All right. It's a little after seven and I would like to call to order this regular Ferndale School District Board meeting. We just finished a special meeting with the Lummi Nation School District and so it just took us a few minutes to transition, even though it's virtual, it just needed a few seconds. So first thing I'd like to do is for us to rise and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next I'll call on Kong Nguyen to read our landing acknowledgement. Kong?
We, the Ferndale School District, acknowledge we are reciting on the traditional ancestral and ceded territory of the Lummi people. The Lummi people are the original inhabitants of Washington's northernmost coast and southern British Columbia. They live in villages throughout the territory and continue to have ongoing relationship with these areas. Since time immemorial, they have celebrated life on their waterways and on the traditional ancestral and unceded lands of their people to perpetuate their way of life. We honor their ancestors as we acknowledge the past, present, and future Lummi people as the original inhabitants of this land.
Thank you, appreciate that. So the next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. So at this time I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as written or to add or make changes to the agenda.
I would like to make a motion to make a slight change on item 3.03. The reorganization of the school board. It comes just after swearing in our new school board members and I think it would be beneficial to have some discussion about that and then take the vote in December as we have in the past, since I think 2015, the vote has always happened in December, not in November. So I'd make a motion to adopt the agenda with the adjustment to 3.03 that I suggested.
All right, any other comments or changes to the agenda? Then it's been moved to adopt the agenda with change in item 3.03, the recognition, I'm sorry, the reorganization of the school board to have that discussion tonight and then hold the vote and elections in December. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Well, at this time, I'm going to be handing the imaginary gavel over to Dr. Kevin Erickson, who is the Vice President of the School Board, and I will be leaving the meeting. I'd like to say a welcome to Steve Charles and Peggy Upiano. I think it's, you're going to find it's a lot of work, but it's very rewarding. I congratulate you on your election to the school board and I know that you will work hard for the students and families in our community. So it's been my privilege to serve on the board for about 12 years and it's just been incredibly interesting and sometimes exhaustive learning experience. I know where we were 12 years ago and I know where we are today and I'm very proud of the steps that we've taken. It's been my privilege to work with the administration that we have. We have such a great administration and they're carrying us through this year, Mark being interim superintendent to Dr. Britt and Kelly Larrabee and of course John, there's John, right in the middle, John Fairburn and all the staff that help and support the district. So I will miss seeing you on a monthly basis, sometimes two and three times a month, but I know the great work will continue. And so I wish you all the greatest success and thank you.
Well, thank you, Andrew, and before I turn it over to Mark, I just wanted to say a few words, wanted to thank both you and Leanne for your many years of service and for the leadership that you've given the board throughout those years in the district and also for the leadership you've given me as I came on as a newbie and learned the ropes of how the school board operates and things, how the action takes place and instilling in me that all important of it's really the kids that matter and that's why we do it. Certainly is not the paycheck, you know, it's making sure that the community's children are educated correctly. And so again, words cannot say enough about all the work that you and Leanne have done and the true dedication within both of your hearts in that purpose. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Wow, thank you, Andrew and Leanne, for all your years of service and I know the, I think I speak for the rest of the executive team that we have enjoyed working with you. We've appreciated your dedication. It hasn't always been the most, what's the opposite of thankless? Appreciated role, I'm sure that you ever played in your life, but it's, you know, like Dr. Erickson said, you always made the decision that you thought was best for kids and kept kids at the center of everything. So we very much appreciate your commitment and your dedication and we know you will continue to support us from your new role as a private citizen with more free time on Tuesday evenings.
Thank you, appreciate that, thank you. All right, so Jackson, at this point you can transfer me over.
Okay. So that leads us to the next item on our agenda, which is item 3.02, which is the swearing in of both Steve and Peggy. And so, Mark, I will turn it over to you to take care of that for us.
All right, so we will go in numerical order. So Steve, please stand up and raise your right hand and repeat after me.
So I, Steve Charles, do solemnly swear.
I, Steve Charles, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution in the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And that I will faithfully and partially perform.
And discharge the duties of the office.
And discharge the duty of office.
Of Ferndale School District 502 Director, District 4.
Of Ferndale School District.
502 Director, District 4.
502 District 4.
Perfect, that's okay, it's awkward this way. In and for the County of Watcom.
In and for the County of Watcom.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to the law and to the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're now on the school board.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
So Peggy?
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right. So I, Peggy Upiano, do solemnly swear.
I, Peggy Upiano, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform.
And discharge the duties of the office.
And discharge the duties of the office.
Of Ferndale School District 502.
Of Ferndale School District 502.
Director, District 5.
Director, District 5.
In and for the County of Watcom.
In and for the County of Watcom.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're now.
As well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, had to mute the phone. Well, congratulations both Steve and Peggy, welcome to the board and to the adventure and all there is within it. So we're glad to have you on board and as I've mentioned to you in our private conversations, at any point if there's any questions or anything that we can help you with, please don't hesitate to let us know. So with that, we will move on to a discussion in item 3.03 of reorganization of the board. As Melinda stated in the past, we've typically done the reorganization in December. This November is kind of an unusual one in the way the dates fall. Normally the election is not certified until after our November school board, but because it was certified before, it resulted in the change at the November meeting as opposed to the new members being sworn in at the December meeting. So with Andrew having been the board chairman and him not being reelected, myself as Vice President has stepped in to that role, at least for tonight's meeting. And then at the next board meeting in December, we will need to elect a board chairman and or vice chairman for the coming year. So any questions, discussion at this point?
No, but thank you for explaining why I always thought that, you know, this took place much, a little bit later than what's happening this year. Mystery solved, thank you.
Yeah, about, I looked from 2015 until now and about half the time it was the board members came in in November and then the, what's my call, the voting on the board chair happened in December and the other half it was, they were sworn in and the reorganization in December. So when I came on, it was November swearing in and December. So I was a little confused, like, why are we doing this so fast? That's like 30 seconds later, so.
Oh, and it feels like it too.
Well, I think part of the process also is in historically or in the past, at least in the years I think you're referring to, and I didn't look back, so I don't know for certain, but at that point we didn't have the chairman or vice chairman in a, not being, you know, continuing on in their role. So that was part of the thought of reorganizing. Just for everyone, I know we've got quite a few people in the audience that are watching the meeting tonight and I'm glad that we have that level of participation. Just as, so that everyone knows and Peggy and Steve have already been advised of this, board policy, the policy that was adopted by the board years before us does, what's the word I'm looking for, does not allow for a new member to be either the chairman or the vice chairman their first year. Basically, I think the biggest reason for that, at least in my mind, is that when you're coming on to the board, you've got a lot that you're trying to digest and learn and get the whole procedure down. And so that is part of that. So just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So at this point, unless there's further discussion, basically we'll be having our board reorganization as part of the December meeting.
I kind of like to talk about the roles and what we want from a board chair. Kind of one of the things just to think about in the next couple of weeks.
Sure.
I think with this, you know, this next year coming with finding a superintendent, that's probably, that is the one main job of a school board is to hire or fire a superintendent. So we're not going to be firing one, hopefully, just kidding, you're good, Mark. But hiring a superintendent, I think that there's a good argument for having a school board member who has experience doing that, but then hiring a superintendent is new to all of us on the board. So thankful to Northwest Leadership Associates for guiding us through that. But for me, what I really appreciated about Andrew as a new school board member is that when I had a question of what the heck are we supposed to do at this point in the, in the agenda, what does this mean, where can I go for this information, that sort of thing, he was always extremely welcoming and pointing in the right direction. So I guess the board chair to me, it's not just a, you know, calling to, calling the meeting to order and going through the agenda items while we're sitting there, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes and I think pulling us together as a school board that is going to be prepared for our meetings, that have our questions answered, that if we're going to be asking questions in the meetings, the people that are going to be called on to answer those know that those questions are coming and I think the board chair can really facilitate that, so. Anything else anybody's looking for in a board chair or questions about what a board chair should do?
Not at the moment, but I'm sure they'll come.
And they definitely will, Peggy, we've all been there and we've all had those. I think Melinda is, states it correctly, is the role of the board chairman is not just limited to leading the meetings, it's making sure things are organized, things get addressed so that things are prepared for the meeting so that we can take care of the business that we need to in an efficient manner and in a well-heard manner and definitely providing guidance and leadership for those, particularly the new members, but also for everyone that's on the board. Mark and I were talking a little bit about that in the sense and we'll be talking about it later, as far as some things that we've talked about or we want to get organized as far as bringing the board together and helping because working together, we make the most progress and we can get the most done and trying to help deal with some of the acronyms, the language, the lingo, the policies and trying to figure out why some of the stuff is done the way it is because realistically said, I haven't met a board member yet that hasn't come onto the board thinking one thing and went, oh, that's why they do that. It's not because it always makes the most sense, but sometimes it's because that's what the law says. So definitely will be some good discussion and certainly if there's questions, feel free to reach out to any of us that have been on the board. So any other comments? Okay. With that, we will move on to item 4.01, which is the receiving of public comment. Public comment is a time that is set aside for members of the community, for the audience when we're meeting in person, to share with us what's on their mind regarding what's happening in the district. This is a time when the board listens, it's kind of an awkward time because we don't engage with the speaker, that does not mean that we're not interested in what the speaker has to say, that we're not intent on that being important, but it is a time when we just listen and the reason for this is twofold. One, it's part of the Open Public Meeting Act, which the OMPA is something that all school board members love and hate at the same time because it rules how we have to act and get together and how we function as a board. And it requires that things that are not on our agenda, we can't address. And that being if there's other people that want to talk about that, if it's not on the agenda, then they didn't know that they needed to attend the meeting. The other aspect of that and probably one that is equally, if not more important, is we want to make sure that we're presenting accurate information and sometimes if we're presented with items that are not part of the agenda, that we've not prepared for, that come up in public comment, we may not have the answers and rather than give a wrong answer, we'd rather get the information and get the right answer. So depending on what items are brought up, we may very well defer those to one of the members of the exec team to get an answer and get back to the speaker or the person who's commenting. We may address those in future meetings, we may address those through our other avenues such as website or comments that way. So just wanted to make that, people aware of that. The, as we've talked about in the past, public comment, we do, because part of the purpose of the board's meeting is to get the board's business done that needs to be done, we do limit public comment to 45 minutes. Each speaker is allowed to speak for three minutes and I think based on the number of people I've got signed up tonight, we should be able to cover all that. For those that don't like speaking in public, there are certainly other avenues of contacting us. All of our contact information, email addresses, phone numbers are listed on the district website and people can, are free to comment through those or contact us through those means and we'd be happy to listen in here that way. So I think that that is all we've got at this point. I do have one letter that was submitted as far as public comment and because we are in a virtual format, I will go ahead and read that, so bear with me as I pull it up. So this, and just so everyone is aware, once I've done reading that letter, then the people that have signed up with Jackson for public comment, we will bring them in to the, as panelists, if I'm understanding correctly, and Jackson, correct me if I'm wrong, but we'll bring them in one at a time as they signed up and allow them to speak for their three minutes. So starting out, the first email that, or the first public comment that was submitted was submitted by Jeff McKay and his letter reads as such. "Board members, as you begin the search for a new superintendent, it is an appropriate time to consider recent actions that have caused unnecessary division and disruption in the district and our Ferndale community. The district implemented a mandatory vaccination policy on all its employees disregarding any normal standards of personal medical privacy and bodily autonomy. As a result, the service of loyal and valuable employees has been lost because they refused to bow to illegal mandates. There are many local governmental agencies that have not imposed such draconian measures on their employees and I'm not aware that any of them have experienced unusual health problems. I urge you to reverse the policy and rehire the fired employees if they are willing to return. The district hired a director of diversity and equity whose ethical standards were apparently less than noble, which led to her resignation. First one must ask why the district needs to create such a position? Have we allowed development of an environment of inequality and discrimination in our schools that has to be corrected? Or is this position intended to promote one race over another? I ask you to not spend badly needed public funds on this or any other administrative posts, but use it in our academic programs. The Robles resignation was a result of critical race theory being forced into our schools by race hustlers. Some are afraid to protest the introduction of our CRT for fear of being labeled racist, but that will not deter many Ferndale parents and taxpayers from raising their voices against the, this pernicious and destructive program which is designed to pit students against each other based on their racial identities. In regards to racial preference and equality, I am providing you with a white paper from the Washington Policy Center. The WPC's Center for Education Director Liv Thins outlines state and federal laws governing anti-discrimination and civil rights. Our civil rights are also guaranteed by our state and federal constitutions and the UN's Universal Declaration of Human Rights. I expect that the Ferndale School District Board of Directors will not implement or approve any program or policies that discriminate for or against any group, but will treat all students as equals. Thank you for your consideration, Jeff McKay, FHS Class of 1964." Okay. So I'm going to pull up, so the list that, people that were wanting to, or that asked to speak tonight, first on the list is Andrew Gustafson.
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can.
Wonderful, thanks so much. The district has not delivered an explanation or apology for the very recent Barbara Robles scandal. We're not going to allow you guys to memory hole this complete failure of the HR department, the superintendent, the school board. Recently fired or resigned Director of Equity Inclusion Barbara Robles was offered a six-figure plus job in this district at the beginning of the summer while actively running for city council in Ellensburg. She accepted the role here, was confirmed by the school board here at the end of July. Instead of dropping out of the race, she continued to campaign for public office four hours away in Ellensburg. She subsequently won the primary in Ellensburg in August, beating out the third candidate who would have ended up on the November ballot had she pulled out of the race, as she ethically and morally should have after she accepted the job in Ferndale. She then bought a home in Ferndale in August and it was at this point that she committed fraud, either committed fraud against the taxpayers of Ferndale and fraud, mortgage fraud in Ferndale by attesting to her lending bank in the Ferndale home, that the Ferndale home would be her primary residence, or she committed voter registration fraud, donor fraud, and election fraud by officially moving to Ferndale but not changing her voter registration to Ferndale. Indeed, she remained registered to vote in Ellensburg and claimed to be eligible to run for office in a town she no longer lived in. If not for the voters of Ellensburg who discovered all this just days before the November election, Barbara Robles would likely still be employed in this district today while simultaneously holding office in Ellensburg. Indeed, our Ellensburg friends notified the voters in Ferndale the weekend before the November election and then this administration appeared to turn itself into a pretzel to try to cover up for this disaster. It was higher, first by allowing Ms. Robles to post a statement on Monday, November 1st on the district website and Facebook page, saying that she had withdrawn from the Ellensburg election and was committed to her job in Ferndale. Then by deleting comments from that Facebook post left by the voter in Ellensburg who had uncovered and reported on the whole scandal in the first place. And then just 24 hours later, on Election Day, interim superintendent DeBock posted that this district had accepted Ms. Robles's resignation. This whole scandal raises several questions that this district needs to answer. Who recruited or otherwise championed the hiring of Ms. Robles? Who vetted her? Who was responsible for doing the basic background check that would have revealed her campaign in office in Ellensburg? Did the district know she was running for office when she was offered the job? Did the board know it when they approved her hiring in July? Did the district and/or the board have an agreement worked out with Ms. Robles to allow her to run for office in Ellensburg and hold office there had she been hired while simultaneously working for the school district in Ferndale? Was she paid, she was paid for several months in her false pretenses? How much of that money has the district clawed back from Ms. Robles? How many other recent hires has this district hired without a comprehensive background check? With the claimed budget challenges, how was the district able to fund a brand new administrative level equity position in the first place? How many paraeducators could the district have funded with the approximately $120,000 that she was being paid? This district owes an apology to the voters for the scandalous hiring and that's what our expectations are in the coming weeks. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. So our next public comment comes from Dom Farm and Kent Selby.
Kevin, as they are coming in, would you like me to keep time?
That would be great, thanks Kelly, sorry I forgot that part. Jackson, are we, oh, there they come.
Apologies, Zoom was taking a little while to promote.
No problem, thank you.
Dom, you're on mute, just in case you are speaking.
Okay, is it working now?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Great, thank you. Good evening, my name is Dom Farm. My topic is about the COVID policy on Washington children. Uh, my topic is about the COVID policy on Washington children. Since the drastic shutdowns began in March last year in most states. The public has been constantly pestered with a lot of rhetoric about the threat of the Wuhan virus to people's well-being and safety, especially children. Uh, in fact, uh, Ferndale schools didn't return to full-time schedules until more than a year later. Based on the claim that the virus is so contagious and deadly, which is filtered down from top levels of government. Thus, I believe it's only fair to examine the validity of their claim. My online search finds only one reference to the death of a child less than ten years old in Washington State. Since early twenty twenty, according to a Q thirteen Fox News article on June second. Here's the direct quote. The Spokane Regional Health District confirmed the death, but they haven't determined yet whether the child had underlying conditions or other complications. They also haven't released much, if any, additional information about the child. Assuming that the the unverifiable unverifiable report is correct. That's one death out of one point seven million children from birth to seventeen in twenty months. Compared with the flu fatalities of six for the same age group for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty season. The last season of which flu deaths were reported. One can fairly conclude that the Wuhan virus poses far less of a threat than the flu virus. A side note, I understand the scant release of information about the child's death because of HIPAA. However, if this privacy rule applies to children, why does it not apply to adults like us? Why are we coerced into testing if we experience any symptoms at all? Why do we have to tell you our vaccination status or risking or risk losing our jobs? Since when did getting sick become a crime and a political issue? Let me turn the table and ask every one of you this question. Can you tell me if you have recently experienced any symptoms of dot, dot, dot? You could fill in the blank, whether it's COVID, diabetes, high blood pressure, or even STD, et cetera. Would you answer truthfully or just say, no, it's none of your business? What makes the Wuhan virus so special that we have to relinquish all of our rights? Is it because it has been exploited as a perfect excuse for the president and many governors to act as if they are tyrants? In order to issue extreme measures and mandates? But that the that's the first half of my remarks. Uh, next Mr. Ken, Mr. Kent Selby is going to deliver the second half. Before I yield, I would like the board to know that the transcripts of my three sets of remarks. And one exhibit were sent to you about an hour ago. Uh, please look for them in your email box if you haven't had a chance to do so. Thank you.
And Kent, again, you're muted at this point if you're speaking.
Okay, am I on now?
You are on now.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, I'd like to just continue on with some of what Dom was referring to. And first of all, it seems to me that the government has recently began pushing the vaccine policy on our children. And it seems that it is with or without the parent's permission. And the question is. To the people out there, are you gonna let that happen? It's not yet a mandate, but based on the way that other campaigns have gone, it's just a matter of time before they attempt to make it mandatory for everyone. Now, I seem to have noticed a disturbing pattern that has emerged during these challenging times. It seems that politicians have completely absolved themselves of their duties and responsibilities to the people that have elected them. They are totally relying on so-called health experts to make their decisions. Now, our system of government was not designed to be governed by unelected bureaucrats that are more often concerned with lining their own pockets. Than their concern for society. It looks like politicians have turned a blind eye to the conflicts of interest. Over financial motives that involve many of these so-called medical experts. And I'd like to remind everyone that during World War Two, there were many doctors who were so-called experts, but they were involved in the systematic extermination of the Jews. They were also involved in gruesome medical experiments, which included forced injections of experimental and often lethal drugs. Does this ring a bell with anybody, or is it just me? And we seem to have forgotten that highly educated people who are not guided by a clear conscience or moral compass. Have become some of the most evil and prolific murderers in history. Now, I hope that you, the board, will think about some of these things. And I pray that it will help in making the correct decision. Of what is best for the Ferndale community, the district staff, whose jobs are on the line, and most importantly. What is best for the children you have sworn to protect? And in a nutshell, that's where I'm at. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Kent. So next on our list is Jennifer Sefic. Sefic. And Jennifer, you're awesome. Oh, there you go.
There we go. All right. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right, great. Thank you. Hello, I am Jennifer Sefic, and I am presenting Mr. Farm's response to Mr. DeBock's termination letter. Number one, the legal justification upon which these forced vaccines and firings by Mr. DeBock. Is the Governor's Proclamation twenty-one dash fourteen point one. A proclamation is not on equal footing as legislation which is passed by the legislature. And I don't believe you have to be a constitutional lawyer to be able to distinguish between the two. And by the way, there was breaking news just a few hours ago. A federal judge issued a nationwide preliminary injunction. Against President Biden's vaccine mandate for healthcare workers. So, school districts could very soon find themselves on the same bench. Number two, Mr. DeBock says that the district granted you a religious exemption from the vaccination requirement. I beg your pardon, but I have certain unalienable rights endowed by our Creator. They are granted by God and not by the district or any politicians. As a Vietnamese refugee whose native language is not English, if I can grasp this basic principle. Upon which our country was founded, I expect Mr. DeBock to be able to as well. Number three, additional safety measures that unvaccinated staff must endure. Title seven of the Civil Rights Act protects employees and job applicants from employment discrimination. If there are additional requirements for those who receive the exemption, then that is no exemption. I highly object to singling out bullying, segregating, and persecuting. The nature of this requirement. New data suggests that the vaccinated and unvaccinated carry similar similar viral transmission loads. Because of this, some medical facilities are now testing the vaxxed and the unvaxxed, so either do all or none, please. Number four, a rushed meeting with union representation. I was not given sufficient time to decide whether to attend, and all the facts had already been clearly presented. Number five, Mr. DeBock referred to a reprimand email on November fifth that he presumes that I had received. However, he conveniently conveniently forgot that I did not receive it because my district email account was locked sometime in the first days of November. This gag order is unfair and authoritarian and is a common where open communication poses a threat to power. He made an unfounded accusation that I came to work with COVID in late September. In a Zoom meeting with Mr. Fairborn on October fifth, I maintained my position that I did not suspect COVID because I'd not contracted it before. His reprimand implies a false and deceptive narrative that COVID is equally deadly to children as it is to the elderly. And those with underlying health conditions. Have we forgotten there is only a one percent death rate and mostly in those that are over sixty-five? I'm urging you to consider my side of the story to end these illegal and immoral mandates in the district and to stop discriminating against honest. And hard-working district employees, namely for bus drivers who simply love their jobs and their children. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. So next on our list is Pat Rogli.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hello, everybody. First of all, I wanna um say welcome Steve and Peggy. I'm thrilled that you have joined the school board. The next thing that I'd like to say is I I disappointed that we did not have uh in-person as well as the virtual. Tonight, I know that the weather is an issue, but for somebody like myself, I could have made it perfectly safe. I would have liked the opportunity to be in person. On cat on at Vista, sorry, at Vista for for a a meeting, and I think I'm not the only one. I think it's important that we have choices. Normally, we do the virtual as well as the in-person, and I don't know why that could not have happened tonight. So with that being said, I will turn it over to somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. So next we have Paul Rosser. And Paul, you're on mute at this point.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent. The policy being used to subjugate and eliminate five exceptional senior bus drivers, bad policy, wrong-headed, and a waste of taxpayer funds. These employees, Judy, Rudy, Dom, Kent, and Julia, combined commercial driving experience represents fifty-eight loyal years. Driving for the Ferndale School District. They each have been driving the same contracted routes for many years and have built strong bonds and relationships with students, parents, faculties. And the community, they have earned their seats and demonstrated loyalty to the district. And during a furlough, working reduced hours with uncertain AABB scheduling for the twenty twenty-one year school year. Maintaining seating charts and most import more, most importantly, keeping kids safe. At the beginning of the school year, transportation was flush with enough drivers to meet mission. When the unconstitutional vax mandate came into effect, onerous religious waivers were granted. For twelve of the thirteen drivers requesting, one was denied. To caveat the religious waiver, the FSD installed a moving goalpost of sorts. A discriminatory clause originally defined print in the waiver made reference, we may require you to be tested. It was changed to you are required to submit testing two times a week. When Dom, Kent, Judy, and Julia questioned this thinking, especially after the fact, recently vaccinated people. Can infect others and catch COVID, they courageously stood their ground, asking why they were being singled out. By speaking truth to power, these four employees demonstrated a high degree of moral character. Which was not reciprocated by the Ferndale School District leadership. Instead, actions were taken for their removal. There is no, there is now a critical driver shortage in the FSD. Staff morale has been crushed and all it is at all-time low. The dispatchers have been required to drive and reroute we-work schedules to meet mission. The mechanic Mitch quit Friday prior to Thanksgiving holiday. He was put into an untenable situation to be both a school bus driver and a mechanic with enthuse with equal enthusiasm. He voted with his feet. It takes a special person to be a school bus driver, and they are hard to come by, especially in a national shortage. Excellent competent mechanics are hard to replace as well. It costs approximately twenty-five hundred dollars and requires thirty to sixty days to properly train a commercial licensed school bus driver. It takes, it will take FSD six to twelve months to fully replace seven employees. In the meantime, transportation team is gonna continue to grind it out, not for the FSD leadership. No, they will preserve, they will persevere because they do not want to let their families down. With this mismanagement and squandering of taxpayers' monies as demonstrated above, how can the Ferndale sinistry continue to support the district's levies? People's livelihood and careers should not be destroyed over COVID. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Next, we have Jeannie Rosser. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Good evening. Congratulations to Peggy Upiano and Chris Childs, and a sincere thank you to all school board volunteers. For your dedicated service to the Ferndale community. My name is Jeanne Rosser. As a Ferndale homeowner, taxpayer, mother, and wife of the former FSD Transportation Department Director. My professional background as a teacher, board member, board chairman, nonprofit executive director, public policy analyst. Investigative journalist, consultant, and small business owner. Allows me to confidently offer the following observations and suggestions. Sadly, I am here today to acknowledge a failure in FSD's structural leadership. And to suggest at a minimum that the new school board elect to both protect the taxpayer's significant investment. By reinstating all wrongfully terminated transportation employees and subsequently move to request Mr. DeBock's resignation. While the outgoing superintendent could have averted many problems that came upon the heels of her departure. It is Mr. DeBock, her interim superintendent, who might have thoughtfully led his entire team to success. Instead, however, under the guise of COVID nineteen, Mr. DeBock chose to demean, harass, intimidate, and arbitrarily and capriciously. Take away valued employees' jobs at the community's expense. While Mr. DeBock ably demonstrates expertise at passive-aggressive shaming and blaming those he clearly dislikes. And or with whom he may philosophically or otherwise disagree. His blatant disregard for due process of law and for certain members of FSD's hard-working dedicated staff. Is regretfully and shamefully obvious, tragically reflecting negatively upon the Ferndale School District as a whole. Moreover, Mr. DeBock's penchant for twisting facts and making mountains out of molehills lacks the maturity suitable and appropriate to the requirements of his current responsibilities. In all honesty, this matter has nothing to do with COVID or so-called mask mandates. Case in point, while attending an off-campus FSD administrative social function, everyone, including Mr. DeBock, was not wearing a mask. Yet shortly thereafter, Mr. DeBock hypocritically singled out certain FSD employees to harass and intimidate. Some who had served FSD faithfully and well for over a decade, and apparently only due to their beliefs. Using his discretionary interpretation of health guidelines as an excuse for either his inability or unwillingness to reasonably communicate. And take positive steps to lead his entire dedicated team to success, Mr. DeBock instead opted to engage in open hostility. This embarrassment embarrassment reflects a loss to the entire community and is wholly out of step with FSD's mission statement. As pertains to character building in children, which first must be modeled by adults. Many FSD transportation staff remarked that my husband was the best director they'd ever had. Given Paul's previous thirty-year career as a highly decorated now-retired Colonel with glowing records, I believe them. What really happened then? Ferndale's future, if not integrity, is on the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
Next, we'll hear from Natalie Chavez. And Natalie, you're muted at this point.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Hello, my name is Natalie Chavez. I'm going to read a letter that was written by Ferndale School Bus. Hello, my name is Natalie Chavez. I'm going to read a letter that was written by Ferndale School Bus Driver Dom Baum. This letter is addressed to all of you. Also, you should have already received a copy of Dom's antibody test results. And if you have not yet received that, then a copy will be forwarded to you after this meeting. Dear Board Members, the screen capture above shows the result of an antibody test that I took recently at Peace Health. The picture indicates that my antibodies to the Wuhan virus are more than 45 times the reference value of one after my initial infection in late September. One can see the attempt by the medical professionals to downplay the significance of a positive test result in the first paragraph. My response is if the test is really unreliable and indefinite, why do they still offer it in the first place? I strongly believe that if you truly follow the science and care about the well-being and safety of people, including children. And this evidence of my robust immunity level is all you need as a confirmation of my health condition to operate safely in a transportation setting for Ferndale School District. Even the CDC itself admits in a November 5th response to a New York Attorney's Freedom of Information Act request. That it has no records of anyone who never received a vaccine, recovered, became reinfected, and transmitted the virus to someone else. The CDC letter is attached for your reference. That is the conclusion of Dom's letter, and now I would like to make a few statements of my own. I had an antibody test taken at LabCorp in Belingham and my results also came back as positive for antibodies. I have since been exposed to both vaccinated and unvaccinated community members over the last few months who were very sick with COVID. I have made house calls to help community members, made pharmacy runs, delivered medications, supplements, and nebulizers to them. And got them going with COVID home treatment intervention protocols. I was in some of their homes for one to two hours without wearing a face mask and I still continue to help community members who need it and I would do the same for all of you. I have never gotten reinfected, never again shown any signs or symptoms of illness. And I have never infected any close contacts or family members as a healthy asymptomatic individual. Asymptomatic individuals do not spread COVID, period. There is no scientific evidence that shows that asymptomatic healthy individuals are diseased, super spreaders, and a threat to society. Natural immunity is far superior than any vaccine direct immunity. And I approve of that, as are many other community members. This is true, no matter what the evildoers try to brainwash you into believing. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Next, we'll hear from Molly Gandy. And Molly, you're muted at this point.
Hello.
Hello.
I want to welcome Peggy and Steve to the board and thank you guys for stepping up. Um, I'm going to talk about the non-vaccinated students today that are being required to test twice a week to participate in their extracurricular activities. Um, as we know that kids with COVID or that are vaccinated do get COVID and do spread COVID and they're not being tested. If they're in contact with somebody who tests positive, they can go right back to their sport the very same day. If a unvaccinated student is in contact, they cannot. We're putting all of our students at a risk right now by not testing our non or our vaccinated students as well as our non-vaccinated students. The studies have shown that everybody can get it. The vaccine is maybe 50% effective at lowering your symptoms, but not on spreading it. So by not testing everybody, you need, you're putting your students at risk. Um, if we're going to do some, we need to do all. You're segregating the students. You're making them feel like they're not good enough. And that they're just not fitting in and it's not okay. And it's the same with our staff members. It's same with our students. They're getting pulled out. They're getting. Just discriminated against and the same with the masks. Teachers are walking around without masks on and they turn a corner. Then they put them on and they yell the students for not having one on. It's not okay. They're not, if you're going to have rules, have everybody follow them or otherwise don't have them. It makes no sense whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. Next, we'll hear from Sarah Luttrell.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Um, hi. I, I was going to read for somebody if they needed me to and they didn't need me to, so hopefully this will come together nicely. Um, I would like to thank everybody for being here and giving us the opportunity to talk. Um, I wish that it would have been in person. I felt like the flood excuse was kind of just laziness on, on the city's part. But um, I'm just hoping that maybe you guys will take some time to reflect on the real issues here right now. You know, we have layers of a government for a reason. We have our federal government, our state government, our county, our city, and school boards. To protect us from one person making a decision for everybody. And the purpose of you guys is to be our voice and to be there for what we want as parents and what the students need. Um, and if you don't want to fight for us and you don't want to do the hard. Road that it takes to stand up for what's right right now, then you should really consider. Stepping away and letting somebody else willing to, to do that for our kids. You know, we see all the time where the, they come in and they give surveys to the kids about, you know, drugs and all this other stuff. Well. Why aren't we doing a survey about how these kids feel with wearing a mask to school every day? How their mental health is. I mean, mental health has gone out the window. All of a sudden it's all about COVID. Nothing else matters. And there are so many kids that don't have parents to step up for them. Who, school used to be their safe place and it's not that anymore. And it's so sad to see. I mean, have any of you gone to the schools and talked to the kids and said, hey, how are you feeling? What's going on? How do you feel while you wear this mask all day? I mean, really get in there and do what you're supposed to do, which is to be a voice for them and be a voice for us. Um, you know, all those kids who lost these bus drivers that they loved. That was somebody that they felt safe with, that they could connect with. You don't know, you know, if this bus driver was the one person in the student's life who they could feel connected to and. And what kind of, you know, safety opportunity that gave them and now that's taken away. I mean, why aren't we asking them that? If we really, really are making this about the kids, ask them, get in there. Give us the, the answers so that we can have the reassurance to know in that we're making these right decisions for the children. Um, I agree with Molly as she said, you know, the vaccine doesn't prevent the spread. So if we're going to have one kid test because they're not vaccinated, if it's truly a concern of COVID, then they should both be tested, all of them. You know, and I also have antibodies and I've been exposed and been around people who are infected of COVID. I was at what they called a super spreader. And me and my brother and my sister-in-law, all who have had COVID are the only ones who didn't get COVID. We've had it. We haven't been vaccinated. Everybody else there who was vaccinated and masked. And everybody who had never been exposed to COVID all got it, but we didn't. I mean, that's my personal experience of the science. Um, you know, furthermore, on the masks in school. Think about your own life. Do you really not have your friends and family come over? Do you wear masks when you're not at school? Do you wear masks when you're around the quarter? Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Kelly. So next we'll hear from Susan Crosser. And Susan, you're muted at this point.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am here in support of the constitutional right to district employees to make their own medical decisions. In fact, I am in support of the right for each individual to choose what is right for themselves. Health decisions are never one size fits all, as the vaccine mandate suggests. Forcing anyone to get the jab to keep their job is illegal and unconstitutional. Forcing anyone to get the jab in order to keep their job is in violation of the school district policy. Against harassment, intimidation, and bullets bullying. This policy indicates that the board is committed to a safe and civil educational environment. For all students, employees, parents, legal guardians. It will see indicates that actions taken by the board should not substantially disrupt the orderly operation of the school. Forcing anyone to get the jab is also in violation of the school district whistleblower policy. This policy encourages district officers and employees to report improper governmental actions. Furthermore, this policy protects employees from retaliatory employment actions for reporting improper governmental actions. The vaccine mandates are illegal and unconstitutional. And employees reporting these improper governmental actions are protected under this policy. Another policy of the Ferndale School District ensures that there will be respect for all. This policy indicates the district will work with staff and community partners to prevent harassment. And to foster settings for all students, families, and members. For to get the jab against their will is against this policy. Forcing anyone to get the jab is in violation of the Nuremberg Code, which stipulates that individuals must be fully informed regarding medical procedures. And that they must not be coerced, among other things. It is not a defense for you for just doing your job. Under the Nuremberg Code, you could be charged with crimes against humanity and held accountable. If you go along with these illegal and unconstitutional mandates. You should know and understand that the claim vaccine is not a vaccine, however, these substances are unproven gene-based spike protein inducing serums. The claim vaccine is experimental. The claim vaccine does not stop the spread of the disease. There are many adverse reactions to the claim vaccine, including death. There is no legal recourse against the manufacture of the claimed vaccine. People that think for themselves and question information that does not make sense should be honored. Please consider the following. If masks are worn, then why the experimental jabs? I mean, if masks work. If the experimental jabs work, then why the mask? If the experimental jab works, why are jab people afraid of those who are not jabbed? If the jab was truly a vaccine, why are these people still getting COVID? Why the jab mandates if the recovery rate from COVID is very close to 100%? Why are medical professionals being restricted from giving second opinions against the jab? The school district website indicates that the compliance officer's main duty is to ensure that district policies are adhered to. I see that the compliance officer is here tonight and I want to know. If they will uphold, if he will uphold his job duties and end this harassment and bullying against these professional. And valued employees. The United States Constitution, the Washington Constitution, and your own policies guarantee individual liberties and freedoms. Please vote to keep these valued and professional bus drivers. Please do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Next, we'll hear from Beth Perry. And Beth, you're unmuted at this point.
Hello. Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate that I spoke last month that making some accommodations for the students that can't wear masks. All month, all day long for the asthma and eczema students that are having. Actual difficulty from wearing those masks. I want to make sure that I'm on top of you guys for making decisions on that, that we can provide accommodation. I also want to reiterate, I'm not going to go over what a lot of these other people said because they're great. That coaches and teachers should not know the vaccination status nor the testing status of any one of their students. That is a private medical issue. It should not be shared at all with a coach, at all with a teacher unless the parent wants them to know. I don't ask you about your personal medical decision. I don't want my people to know if my kids are circumcised or uncircumcised. They shouldn't have to know that. Okay, third of all, um. I'm a mom who helps fill sandbags and is writing her notes. You guys can't see it right now, but on the same piece of paper that my menu for the week is written on. Please don't turn me into the DOJ. Please, I'm not a terrorist, okay? And these Zoom meetings kind of suck. I just want to say that. I'm not going to take up your time this week, but please be on. Finding accommodations for those children with the asthma, with the eczema that cannot wear masks all day, just like we make accommodations. For the kids with peanut allergies. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Beth.
Did we lose Kevin?
No, there was a bit of a glitch of Zoom. He's coming back.
Okay.
Don't know what happened there, but um. I had you guys, but you didn't have me for a moment, so my apologies. Um, so that concludes the list of people that had signed up for public comment. Um, as of the last list that I got from Jackson. Thank you to all of you for voicing your concerns and your opinions. We appreciate that and definitely will take them into consideration. Some of the items that, that were talked about. Will be discussed further later tonight and I invite you to stick around for that as well. So at this point. Um, next item on our agenda is item 5.01, which is to receive information from Dr. Laura Lynn. On the since time and time memorial curriculum. And with that, I'm, is she joining us, Jackson or Mark? Oh, it looks like there she is. So, welcome Laura, and I will turn it over to you to tell us about how things are going and what the current status is with the since time memorial curriculum.
Great. Um, thank you very much. Board member Erickson and to each of you, thank you for this opportunity to be with you all this evening and to share information and updates. Around the since time and memorial tribal sovereignty curriculum. Um, first I want to say my gratitude to each of you for your service, to the students and families and community. And uh, just to also as part of my introduction. I'd like to share that my name is Dr. Laura Lynn. I am the daughter of Grace Elizabeth Cusick and Kenneth Lee Rohr. Uh, my mother's mother's people are descendants of the Chickasaw people. Um, also of European ancestry. Um, I am a descendant, but not an enrolled citizen. Um, also, my mother's father's people come from the Eastern European. Countries and my great-grandmother is of Jewish ethnicity. Um, my father's mother was Laura Ann May Saida, that's whose name I share and she. Her mother was of European ancestry. Um, her father came to these lands from Syria, from the Mideast. Um, my father's. Father's people also came to these lands from Syria. Um, when we make our introductions, we always begin by sharing with you, with, 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 with you who our people are. Um, also I'm joining you from the ancestral lands of the Schumash people. I'm here with my mother on the central, central coast here in California. Um, and I just want to also send our, our loving thoughts and prayers with you all. Um, as you're facing the, this time with the, with the flooding and, and all that you're needing to respond to within your community. I serve as the program supervisor with the Office of Native Education with OSPI. There are five of us that serve in the office. John Claymore is our executive director. Joan Banker serves as the program administrative specialist, has been in. Uh, native education for many, many decades and also. Shandy Abrahamson serves as our CTE tribal specialist. And Megan Baker serves as the administrative assistant. And our responsibility within the office is to ensure educational opportunity for the over 60. And our responsibility within the office is to ensure educational opportunity for the over 64,000 American Indian Alaska Native learners who attend schools and our 295 public schools, our seven tribal compact schools and Pasco Sherman, which is also a tribal school. And we do our work through a consultation with the federally recognized tribes of Washington State, also through collaboration with our tribal partners and educational leaders and partners such as yourselves. So I know that's kind of a long introduction, but in our ways, we want to just ensure that you all know. The other thing I would just share about myself, I've been in education for, this is my 40th, entering my 40th year as an educator, practicing educator, and I had that opportunity because of my student teaching practicum, which was in the Ferndale Public Schools. So I did my student teaching practicum with Joanne Denellen way back when. So please say hello to the family, and I just wanted to let you all know that I came to, I came to you all through you all. So thank you. So if I may, I'm going to practice my screen sharing here and just share a few, a few comments about some updates with the curriculum, and then you know, share just kind of high level. How do we build upon the strengths and successes of the work that you're all doing in the district right now? And then maybe spend some time if there are questions that you have of me in terms, in terms of how I can be of assistance in this good work that you all, that you all are doing. So let me try the screen share here, and Jackson, I want to thank you for helping me to kind of get this all set up. Are you seeing my screen? Okay, everybody. Yep, thanks for the thumbs up. See that? So I'm gonna, as we open, I just, this opening slide just begins with a reflection for each of you to kind of take a moment to think about your experiences with tribal history and tribal sovereignty. And just for a couple, about four questions here, just to kind of consider on a scale of one to five, how connected you feel to these questions. You know, the Lummi Nation, of course, hosted the canoe journey in 2019. Maybe you had a chance to participate as part of that work within your community. And then we think about understanding the impacts of tribal sovereignty. And we understand, you know, thinking about what our knowledge and experiences around the bolt decision that continues to impact all of us today. And then finally, to knowing what the RCW 28A requires. These are all questions that are part of the Since Time Memorial Curriculum, and that last question, of course, is the, is the, is the code that requires the implementation of the Since Time Memorial Curriculum. As of 2015, districts are required at the time of social studies review and adoption to integrate the Since Time Memorial Curriculum in collaboration with the tribe that's nearest. So that would be the Lummi Nation. And then for the bonus activity, it's taking these questions and considering our understandings in relation with the Lummi Nation and their specific history that way, which is helpful for us to know as we, as we work on issues that we, that we share in common. And that really is the intent of the Since Time Memorial Curriculum. It's an opportunity for all of our students to have that understanding of tribal sovereignty, tribal history, treaty rights, and tribal governance structures in order for us to work on issues that we do have in common and to understand the, the distinct and unique relationship that tribes have as sovereign, as sovereign nations in the work that we attend to. So the curriculum itself is a place-based curriculum that, and really what that means is that we learn first with the places that we are of, and we learn in collaboration with the tribal nations and tribal people who are here now and have been here since time immemorial. This is an inquiry-based curriculum. We'll in a moment share the essential questions. And the curriculum itself is really intended to engage our students in a way that allows them to develop both their critical thinking skills and also to be taking informed action around issues that impact the well-being of the community. The curriculum centers tribal perspectives, and it certainly situates tribal people in a contemporary context. It intentionally is, is addressing erasure that we find in our, our curriculums. The curriculum considers real-life issues that require understanding in multiple perspectives. That includes the tribal perspectives. And finally, as, as we shared, it's also is required to be implemented in our elementary, middle, and high schools in collaboration with the Lummi Nation. And so, and again, I've just been sharing just a couple of highlights in terms of tribal sovereignty, just to ensure we have just some foundational understanding as we move into this, into this work of the, of the districts work with the curriculum. And so tribal sovereignty, again, begins with inherent rights of tribal nations to self-govern in order to ensure the well-being of their citizen lands and resources. Through the government-to-government relationships, we want to recognize the implications of tribal nations as sovereigns. And we're honoring the Centennial Accord Agreement, which Lummi Nation is signatory of, and the Centennial, the Centennial Accord and the Millennium Agreement, excuse me, that the Lummi Nation is signatory of. Lastly, in serving our American Indian Alaska Native learners, really recognizing that our tribal students are descendants and citizens of tribal nations and that their sovereignty continues as part of their education experience. And that has implications for all of us as leaders and as educators in terms of the decisions that we make and approaches that we have in our, in our school systems. Some of the features of the curriculum, and I'm going to spend just a couple minutes with the curriculum itself. We've talked about its place-based, its inquiry-based. It's intended to be integrated into existing curriculum. This is a standards-aligned curriculum. Currently, we've aligned with these standards that are the state standards around social studies, English language arts, environmental sustainability education, and social emotional learning. In the times that we're in now with the impacts of the pandemic, that last, that social emotional learning is really critical, also because this is a place-based and inquiry-based curriculum, although it's intended to be integrated specifically into all social studies, history courses, including Washington State History, US History, Contemporary World Problems, and civics. It lends itself to interdisciplinary work at all levels. And so I think that's a, just a pathway for us to include. Also, that these standards are the standards that, that we've aligned to. However, it will also align to other standards. We just have not done, completed those alignment processes yet. So for example, there's work with next-generation science standards. This curriculum can be integrated that into our science courses, work within our arts areas, also within our health and fitness areas, as well as mathematics, when we consider what some of the content is, especially around the science and environmental science lessons. These are the five questions that the entire curriculum is developed around. All lesson resources from preschool through high school are addressing one or more of these questions. And the intent of the curriculum is for our students to have opportunity at every grade level to consider these five, each of these five questions. And then there are, of course, outcomes for elementary. These are found, these are foundational outcomes that they'll have opportunity to build upon into middle school, where students are going into more depth in terms of concepts that are impacted by tribal sovereignty, including the treaties and the work that we do in treaties, as well as understanding additional, additional dimensions of tribal sovereignty. And then within high school, again, our students build their knowledge to a place where they're now considering landmark court decisions and legislations that have affected and continue to affect tribal sovereignty. And they have opportunity to consider governmental structure of the Lummi Nation and to, again, understand you know, the work that goes on, the collaborative work, government-to-government work at the local level, the state level, and the federal level in collaboration with tribal nations. So I want to just take a pause here, and are there any questions so far before I navigate the curriculum that I can respond to?
Let's see. Hello?
Hi.
Hi. Didn't know if you could hear me or not. So this is an awful lot to absorb. Will the, will the slide presentation be available after the fact?
Absolutely, yes. And I've sent it forward to both Fay and to Jackson. And so, yes.
Okay.
And Peggy, we can get that attached, so it's part of board docs, so that everyone in the audience can see it at some point as well.
That would be great. I mean, I have like a massive ton of questions. The one that flashed up most immediately in my mind, just because it was the last thing that popped up on the, on the screen, was, you know, some of the standards that they hope to achieve by the time they graduate from high school. And, and one of them said, you know, students should be able to recognize landmark court cases that affect tribal sovereignty. And I'm thinking, I don't think a lot of kids recognize landmark court cases that affect, I mean, you know, things like Plessy versus Ferguson. I don't think if you went out and asked your ordinary average high school kid that they could answer some of those things. So it seems like a really tall order to expect. It's just an observation, you know, that I don't know that that's a, is that a realistic standard?
That's a really great observation, Peggy, and I'm thinking, as if you, if I could maybe open up a couple of the high school lessons, just to give a sense of how we approach that within the curriculum. And it's not going to be all landmark decisions. There's going to be, you know, selected decisions that have had significant impact and continue to have significant impact with tribal nations today.
Okay, I just, I'm just wondering how that weaves in, you know, with other history and other court cases and and it just, it just surprised me because I was thinking, well, I mean, a lot of times you ask people, you know, kids even don't even know who our state representatives are. And so this just seems very ambitious to me.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and what I appreciate too about your question is that this can also be a jumping off place for further inquiry as well in, across, across the curriculum.
Okay, well, I'm sure I'm going to have a ton of questions. Are you available to answer questions if I, if I email you and?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and Peggy, just so you know, and other members, the last slide has our contact information.
Okay, thank you.
We're part of your team anytime.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah.
I have a kind of question, observation, looking for advice as far as the place-based part of it. And this is kind of coming from a personal experience. When I was a kid, we moved around every two years. So to get a grasp on a very specific place and then move to another place, et cetera, would have been more difficult, I guess. I don't know. But then also as an adult coming here, because I did not live here, I have through being on the board and seeing what Ferndale School District has done the last few years with the Treaty Day and the land acknowledgement, I do feel like I've learned a lot more about the people that have been on this land where I now live since time immemorial than I ever did about any other place I ever lived. Do you have advice, suggestions of ways where we can make this accessible maybe to people who are either new to the area or who are coming through the area and won't be here like the Lummi tribe has been here forever and will continue to be here forever? What about people who are passing through?
Well, I'm wondering about how, and this could actually, I maybe pose it as a project potentially for our high school and middle school and even potentially elementary, depending on how it's formed. That there's a, in the community, there's, there's a, there's a welcome packet of someplace or a welcome place of someplace. How might, I pose this as a question to our high school students, maybe. How might they, I mean, pose it as a problem, like within our community, we have people who are coming to visit. How do we share about who we are? How do we share about the, the the land that we share? How do we share about the history that we share as part of their Since Time Memorial curriculum work?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, it's a way for them to develop a place-based project, an inquiry-based project that's meaningful to the community. And so when we talk about the taking informed action, that's an example of taking informed action. That's, that's supporting the community itself. So that would be a possibility there, and that can be also satisfying. Civics, civics required credit as well and could potentially support some of the classroom-based assessment work that students might do as a product to demonstrate their knowledge and understanding.
I know the district has a good relationship with the Chamber of Commerce already, and it seems like that would be a great partnership or way to incorporate. Thank you.
Right, and that would be the district, the Lummi Nation, and, and the Chamber of Commerce coming together to do that with its student, student-led. Yeah.
I have another question. If that's okay. It's always, I've always had this question about this particular phrase. What does time immemorial actually mean? What kind of a time span are we talking about?
I love that question. So the term time immemorial, and you'll hear this in tribal communities. It, what it means, it's the time of our ancestors, and what this represents is thousands and thousands of years of known and lived experience that Lummi people, you know, have a story of origin that begins right here with the lands that the people are of. They're not from these lands, they're of these lands. And, and yeah.
Not from these lands, but of these lands. What does that mean?
Again, it comes to the peoples, the people's stories, that their people are of these places and have been, and they will use the term since time immemorial. And it go, that's the interconnection now of history and culture and the teachings of the, of, of, of the culture. And it comes to what it means to be Lummi or what it means to be Chickasaw or what it means of, of the, of the, of the people, because we are of the lands and places that, that, that's, that's who we are. It's part of our identity.
Okay, I mean, and how does this, how does, or does it even integrate with anthropology going way back, you know, like anthropological records and, and, you know, the concept of the migration of humans and crossing land bridges and things like that? I mean,
Yeah.
Just, just.
Right. So there, I think there's a couple of perspectives I would offer. One is that, again, this is a place where we, we have opportunity to understand ways of knowing and multiple perspectives around. and we we have opportunity to understand ways of knowing and multiple perspectives around ways of knowing. And also for us to understand more deeply about what it is meant by theory, what theory is is met in terms of what theory is and is not, I guess. And then I think too that increasingly there is also what I would say, the science itself is coming to support the the story, the traditional stories and teachings of 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 tribal peoples as well. There's another resource that I would maybe recommend to that's part of the curriculum. There is a video that's shared by Roger Fernandez, who is a citizen of the Lower Hauwaklalum tribe. And he shares an introductory video around the relationship between storytelling and science. And he does a really beautiful job of explaining that these are two ways of knowing that have purposes toward understanding, it's intent of understanding is differentiated, but also supportive of each other. So and I can, I'd be happy to send that to you if you are send the link to you.
Yeah, actually, I'd really like.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
I just want to be really mindful of your time to, if I may, share just really briefly the kind of the curriculum and maybe make a just a what I've, what I've learned, I want to just thank Fay for kind of sending and sharing the superintendent's report that that you all reviewed in March of 2021. And from that, just what makes sense in terms of just the continuing to build upon the strengths of the strengths and successes. The Ferndale School District is what we call an early adopter of the since time of memorial tribal sovereignty curriculum. And it's a matter now of, you know, how do we continue to strengthen and and move that work forward? Are we okay time wise for me to do just that? Okay, let's see, one thumb up. Okay. All right. So I'm going to share a screen again. And and again, I'll I'll also send forward the the link. This is, this is, the curriculum itself is a web based link. And I don't know how many of you had a chance to kind of spend some time within the curriculum itself, but I'm more than welcome to come join us for, we have a December night introductory training. And please, please join us if you if you are available. So the curriculum again, these are, the lessons are all online. We have lessons from early learning for elementary school. We have K three lessons, Washington State History Lessons, fifth grade lessons. And now, for those of our educators who are teaching ancient civilization, we've developed tools to integrate tribal history as part of ancient civilization. Also world history resources and world geography resources for high school as well. For our middle school, again, we have the sixth grade ancient civilization. And then seventh grade Washington State History. And there's a resource on here to help integrate the since time of memorial as part of the year long Washington State History courses that are also being developed. And then the US History for eighth grade. All of the units for fourth through 12th grade align with the OSPI identified social studies units as well. So our curriculum is completely aligned to the to the to the states, to the states work. Not only are the standards aligned, but also the curriculum resources so that any part of history that our students might be studying, they have opportunity to learn tribal history with with as part to as part of their course work. And the way we did that is we developed these resources in what we call levels. So that you can, a teacher is confused to implement anywhere from one or two class days all the way up to a full unit in completion of a classroom based assessment. Again, for our high school, we have our world history and world geography resources. And I'll just click into this real quick so that you can see. Here are the, this is the timeline that can be used by our by our as a tool for educators. And then we also have a series of teacher to teacher videos that we've developed with other educators sharing their approaches to doing this work so we can learn together. And then they've also shared additional resources. And I think you might have noticed this too, that we have also developed Spanish language resources across the entire curriculum. So if you have bilingual or excuse me, dual language and or multilingual classrooms within the district, the since time of memorial curriculum can also be integrated as part of instruction in classrooms. Finally, I would just share, this is a national curriculum that was developed by the National Museum of the American Indian, which is part of the Smithsonian Institute. And our curriculum team helped to write two of the inquiries that are specific to the Pacific Northwest. This is state of the art curriculum. It's begins with a compelling question. Why do the foods we eat matter? You know, think about our high school kids. That's a great question for that. Why do the foods we eat matter? And then we have grounding resources, which these are videos. This is an interactive map. There's a an essay. Here's the teacher's instructions, the student work. And then there's a series of supporting questions, which are case studies. And so why is the salmon important to native people, nations of the Pacific Northwest? Notice it's in present tense. It's not in past tense, right? So it connects today. When you show these resources, our students, in some instances, we're going to see family members, they're going to see friends, they're going to see relatives in in this curriculum, because this is, this curriculum was developed in 2018. So they they'll see their connections and it's not uncommon for our kids to say, they just call out, hey, there's so and so right in the middle of their of their instruction, right? So and then another supporting question, how do threats to salmon impact native people and nations of the of the Northwest? And again, it's a series of case studies. There's also at the end or as part of each inquiry, notice this is the action taking in terms of what native nations are doing today. This is also an opportunity for our students to be engaged in this work around famine recovery. They can be involved in all kinds of work that that's that's really matters to our kids in terms of their, of the lands and waters that we're all that we're all sharing. Finally, there the case study for this inquiry is focusing on the food sovereignty work of the Muckleshoot People. However, the Lummi Nation is also doing food sovereignty work. So there's really opportunities for us to to learn you know, the work that's going on right within our within our community. So I, again, thank you for the time to kind of share that and also encourage you to, this is the Fish Wars. This is the Bolt Decision. This is a landmark case. And it's a through line for the entire curriculum. So you'll see salmon, introduction of salmon habitat and life way all the way from early learning pre K until we actually unpack this this case as a as a as an inquiry itself. So I I hope that was helpful. There are other resources here in the website and I'm happy to, you know, help connect you with with these resources. But the final, I just would add in terms of, you know, continuing to build upon the successes. And this is really from a review of 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 the report that was shared with 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 you all in March. Just continuing to engage and strengthen consultation with Lummi Nation. And I believe you might have had a chance to meet maybe, and if not, hopefully soon. And part of that is to continue to establish and and meet and celebrate shared implementation goals specifically around the since time of memorial curriculum. I think the the Treaty Days Treaty Day video work is really, really powerful. It's had big impact. So then it becomes, what more might we do? What's next for us to collaborate together to develop? I know there's honoring the salmon is is work that I saw across all levels in the report that that I read. There might be some work that can be done there too. In terms of the district's implementation plan, I think an update of the plan, because there it's been time because of other issues that 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 we've been dealing with in the last couple of years, eh? So but there's an opportunity to update the plan. Also, there's new resources within the since time of memorial curriculum itself that can be that can be added to to the plan. And then the communication across the district with that in developing a feedback system for teachers, students and families to continue to strengthen the work. And of course, always this ongoing professional learning and how do we develop capacities for sustainability over time? And one way maybe we find ways to develop since time of memorial coaches to help with that with that work. Is that something that can be done to sustain district, the district's work that way? The the ideas are limitless. And finally, just wanted to invite you all to an introductory webinar on on December ninth. Please come join us. And we just, we spend time going through the history and unpacking the curriculum with our educators. And it's just amazing work that we get to do. We we worked with nearly 7,000 educators with this training since May of 2020 with these new resources that are partly these ready to go and teacher webinar resources. Okay, I'm gonna stop sharing. I see Peggy, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, for the webinar. I mean, is that going to be available at the OSPI site? Is that where it's going to be or where where do we get the link?
Yeah. So let me just do a quick, and I can send this out again as part of.
Oh, I missed it. I'm sorry.
Oh, you probably didn't, but let me.
Well.
I don't think I. Let me do a, let me do a let me get out of my screen here. Thank you for your patience with that. So right here on the STI website.
Okay.
Here where it says the fall. And when you click on that, that's, there's a registration link.
Okay.
And scroll to the second page. Pardon me if that's making you dizzy. Right here's the registration link. Once you register, send you a link to the to the webinar. And we have capacity for 500 people. So come join us.
And that's at four o'clock, right? You said?
Yeah, four o'clock on December ninth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. And we share all of the resources that we share the web, we share the slideshow, we share the you know, other supplemental resources with our educators. We put as much to the site as we can because we just, it takes all of us to do this. And if I just may, you know, conclude with the sharing of this vision statement, because I really believe this is how you all are doing your work and I I have so much gratitude. This is a vision statement that was shared from a report that was issued to the state legislature in 2008. And it begins that all children are identified as gifted and talented. That's one of the teach, one of our teachings since time immemorial. And and that we recognize that each child has a skill and ability that contributes to the health and the vitality of our communities. For our communities to thrive, we must cultivate and identify these skills and abilities. And it really takes our whole community to do that. And that our elders are entrusted to oversee this sacred act of knowledge being shared. Our elders guide us. And I think that many of the people that you're that you're collaborating with, you have opportunity to collaborate with elders in in, not only in tribal communities, but throughout your community. And that's still our vision for Indian education today. And this is our contact information for our office. And again, Jackson has the slides and I'm available anytime to support and collaborate with you all. Just want to say we raise our hands to show our gratitude. I raise my hands to each of you. And thank you for your good work and for this opportunity to share. Are there other questions that you had before you move on in your agenda?
Laura, thank you so much for all of your work and especially for, you know, I know you and I went backwards and forwards and I really appreciating you taking the time to look at the work we've done. That was really cool. So thank you. Thanks for being here tonight and for your patience in jumping in in our agenda here. So I'll hand over to Kevin and Mark. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Be well.
Thank you, Laura. Appreciate the report. So at this time, um, I know that I've noticed that Mark and Wayne have been on. And if there's no objection from the board, I'm going to ask that we jump to 6.01 and do it before 5.02, just so Mark and Wayne don't have to continue hanging on while we're doing stuff. So is there any objection from any of the board members? Okay, so then with that, we'll go ahead and jump to item 6.01, which is the focus group report from Northwest Leadership Associates. So I don't know if Mark, Divak, if you have anything or if Cecilia is coming on or who's introducing them, but if we can turn it over, I see Wayne popping up, so we can turn it over to them and let them present their information.
Yeah, I think we will just turn it straight over to Mark and Wayne and let them present their information.
Thank you.
Well, hello, everybody. Mark will be on here with video in just a second. Nice job tonight. You have a lot of, a lot of ground to cover and a lot of content and heard a lot from your community. So you're you're to be commended. We also want to congratulate the new board members and certainly also join you in honoring the the outgoing board members. So a lot of service, a lot of years of service and a lot of service time ahead of all of you. Mark's going to take the first portion of this and then I'll join in after he shares the focus group report with you.
Thanks, Wayne. And my congratulations too to Peggy and Steve on your membership in the school board. It's a very important job and the most important job you have is hiring a new superintendent. So here we are tonight. Okay, so let's talk a little bit tonight about the three days we spent in your district back in early November. And we spent, we were here the ninth, the 10th and the 12th and met with everybody, including school board members and provided two reports. Those reports, first of all, are just general comments from each group. And I suggest school board members read those, particularly read what the students had to say. We always look forward to that meeting that we have with the students, but we had 19 different groups we met with and almost 100 different people that provided input into this report that we're going to give tonight. And I know you you've been here since five o'clock. So bear with me. We've been there. Wayne and I have been there. We know what you're going through. So we're going to try to make this pretty quick and and to move on because we're at the step in the process where we we were gathering input, we're being transparent. We've got really four ways for people to be involved. And we really stressed that with every group we had. The online survey, the focus groups, the preliminary interviews, and then the finalists when the finalists come. So all four ways. And so nobody should be able to come up to you after and said, I didn't have a chance to give any input. You will be getting a lot of input and that'll be, this is really the first part of that. And as Wayne will talk about, this drives the formation as we put together the brochure, when we talk about challenges and characteristics, this will help you as a board to put that together. You work with Wayne. He'll talk to you about that. But as we move forward here, each group, we went through the timeline with, we talked about Northwest Leadership and and you know, basically what we do. And and you know, basically what we do as retired superintendents, and didn't do a very good job of retiring. And we we tell the people that are involved, this is all confidential. It's not going to be attributed to any one person what they say. So as you see in in the comment piece, if anybody wants to see this, this is an open public record That if this requested, they could see it. But as the comments go through each group comment, nothing is attributed to anybody individually. And we had some great cooperation from the leadership team. Selena did a nice job, really nice job of putting this all together. And and I have to tell you, we're really enjoying working with her again. We had, you probably know, we worked with her when we did the Mount Vernon search a couple of years ago. So we're pretty pretty jazzed about moving forward with this and getting it going and working from here. So I don't know if you have this document, Jackson, but if you have the common threads or you should have that somewhere in front of you, school board to to look at. I hope you've had a chance to take a look at those. I know you can read, so I I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time reading these to you. But I do want to emphasize that we we asked three questions. We asked you, we asked, what were the celebrations or the positives about the district? What were the challenges the new superintendent is going to face when they come into Ferndale on July 1st? And the third one is, what attributes are you looking for in a new superintendent? So I want to, I'll do the celebrations first, because I think that's really this important to start off in the positive. This is a great place to live and work, and it came through throughout from the students to the staff, to the community, to the community leaders we met with. It's a great place to work. It's got a great location, you know, except when the Northeaster blows, it's really a nice place to live, you know. It's I've lived in Waukesha County, so I know what that means. I think you do, too, Steve. So if you'd love on the other side of the Smith Road. It still has a small town feel to it. It really does. And in that, that's really, I think, a selling point for us. The other part is the community is very caring, involved in supporting the schools. There's a lot of pride in your schools here. There's also strong teachers and administrators and staff and strong leadership in the district. There's a real value with the relationship with the Lummi Nation. And I know you just spent a lot of time on the curriculum, but the people really do think that is important. Also, there's a lot of positives with your COVID response and your COVID, how you've navigated through that and going through that. Your CTE programs, your special ed programs, your AP courses, your fine arts, all those are really, you need to be complimented. Also mentioned a number of groups that the former board really worked well together. So I guess that's, you know, as we move forward, I'm sure you will, too. And they were very supportive of the equity equity work that you've done in the district. The new high school, of course, there's a lot of pride in that. There's a lot of people that are very positive about the bond passing and the construction going on. And the final thing is that your schools are really the hub of the community. They are really the center of the Ferndale community. And that's really important. That's important for candidates to know, and it's important for you to brag about when you talk about your district. So the second part is challenges. What are we going to face if I'm your new superintendent when I walk in on July 1st? Well, we heard two terms, trust and transparency, trust and transparency. And this is from the district and the community. We we have to, gonna have to work on that, folks. COVID reentry, that's always in people's minds. You heard it tonight. There's a lot of, a lot of people talking about it out there. A lot of people are concerned. Passing the levy in 2022 is a challenge. Even though your new soup will not be here yet, that's still a challenge if it doesn't pass facing the new superintendent. There's frustration and divisiveness in the community. I know I'm speaking to the choir here. And politics seem to be affecting the district a lot more than they did in the past. The board must come together as a challenge. There you basically have two new board members and you've got a lot of board members that haven't been on the board a real long time. And the governance model needs to be addressed. And what kind of a governance model are you going to stick with your old one? Or are you gonna come up with a new one? What's that gonna look like? Social media as a cause for creating distrust, frustration and division in your community. A challenge is diversity of your student population. You have a very diverse student population in Ferndale, a lot more than it used to be. Another challenge is understanding the history of the district and understanding that as they come in. The equity and inclusion work to continue that is a big challenge. And supporting the relationship and continuing to build a relationship with the Lummi Indian Nation And other minority groups as well in your district. And finally, the challenging facilities. You know, you've got to get that new high school built, hopefully on budget. I know there's been some delays, but once that's built, you've got aging buildings. You've got buildings that are going to need to have some sort of work done on them. And down the road, you're gonna need a facilities plan and a way to address that. So finally, the attributes. What are people looking for in a new superintendent? Well, I'll go back to the challenges, someone who's can build trust and have a collaborative and open style. That's really a common thread throughout. Understands your current challenges and can deal with the COVID reentry. Visible, involved in the community, interacts with schools, they're at activities, they're at plays, they're the band concerts, they're basketball and football games. They're at the Ferndale parades, they're visible in your community. A good communicator, a good listener and listens to all groups of people. Can lead and communicate and have your trust, have the school board's trust. That's really key. I can't overemphasize that, how important it is to have a superintendent and board partnership and how you have to be able to trust each other. Embraces and understands the history of the district and values a smaller rural district. Values and promotes diversity, equity and inclusion. Promotes and grows positive partnerships. I mean, with we're talking here with the Lummi Nation and with the city. There's some real positive partnerships going on with the district and the city right now. Somebody who's transparent, genuine, humility. In other words, they walk on water. Successful experience in education, that was a common thread. Somebody who's been a teacher, a leader, administrator. Someone who wants to stay here, wants to live in the district and invest in the community and is a good fit. Excuse me. Somebody who's personable, approachable, courageous, energetic and a visionary. Somebody has experience in bond and levy campaigns and construction projects. And finally, but not last, but not least, an instructional leader. Somebody who raises the standards, who's a team builder, who can coach your administrators And can understand and support good quality instruction. So that's a quick kind of go through of what we came up with with the talking points or common threads. Throughout the three days we were here, we got some really good input. You can read the whole narrative when you have time, or maybe you've already read it. But certainly, we felt really positive after having been here for three days. We felt positive about the input we gave, people gave us. We felt that people were open and honest and weren't afraid to speak their mind. And that's all we can ask for. So this information is your information now. And then I'll turn it over to Wayne and he'll talk about how we work from here all the way to the 25th of February When the job closes and then we work to the next step where we decide who we're gonna interview and hire. So go ahead, Wayne.
Okay, thanks, Mark. So as you can see, you've got lots to celebrate. You've got some challenges. Most of the challenges aren't unique to the Ferndale School District. And you've got some key attributes that you're looking for in your next superintendent. And there's a was a high degree of agreement on all those themes. The the common threads were pretty common from group to group, and that's a good thing. And it's also good that they were common. Board members knew what the issues are in your community and what the strengths of your of your instructional programs and and all of that. So that played out just about the way it should have. So we're right on schedule in terms of finishing up the focus groups reporting to you in terms of our timeline. Our next big step is to take the information you just received And use it to develop an electronic brochure. And we've got a good start on that already. I roughed out some of the pieces of it. Selena's provided some content about the district and a little bit about the community. And that's to have at least one level of review, I believe, by your administrative team or or some of your administrative team. So that should be pretty close and ready to go. So our thought is I would work on that. And I would get that to our, get the draft of the brochure to our desktop publisher. And we're gonna shoot for getting something back to you. She's pretty fast. And since it's almost ready to go, I should get it to her tomorrow or the next day. And she'll probably get something back to us by the end of the week. And what we typically do is send it back to the contact person. In this case, that's Selena. And that'll all look pretty familiar to her, because she's written a lot of it. And then and then the board, the board will figure out how they, board members want to review it. Mark will be in the loop on that. You know, anybody else that you want to have eyes on it. And we want to get it right for you. It doesn't go out till you say it's right. And then we'll pass it back and forth a few times if we need to. Our target is to have it out in for distribution on December 6th. So we should be able to make that, kind of depending on how much work it needs going back and forth. And we got a weekend in there, that kind of thing. But we should be pretty close to that. So we're in a good spot in terms of getting it out to potential candidates and out on our distribution list. And then Mark and I, once it's ready to go, we'll get a PDF of the document to your district. Many districts put it on the website. You might have some key people in the in the community or the district that want to see it, and it's available for that. It's not really designed to be a tabletop document, but you know, it can it can lend itself to that if you need it to. And then Mark and I'll use it in our targeted recruiting. We've got a pretty good running list of potential applicants for this position. And we'll tune that up a little bit. And then what we do is we divide up the list and we send an email to each of those candidates, probably 50, 60 people, maybe more. With a copy of an application form that's tailored to your district and a copy of a P of the document, a PDF of the document. And then we, you know, let them know that we're available and that we're the contact. And the the brochure tells them what the instructions are for the submittal of their of their application. They need to write a pretty big writing prompt to the challenges and the opportunities and the attributes that you're looking for in your next superintendent. So we'll be doing that. And after you sign off on the brochure, it gets kind of quiet from your perspective. It gets very busy from our perspective through December and January. And then as we hit the closing date, we start zeroing in on what the what the next steps are. We'll do a mid search search report for you half at the halfway mark. We have that on the calendar and give you an idea of what the applicant pool is likely to look like. Kind of not who by name that we're hearing from, but a profile of of the kinds of people we're hearing from, where they're from and what their levels are. What size districts, whether they have their doctorates, any diversity, that sort of thing. Give you a sense of it. And we'll zero in on the interview, screening and interview processes that come at the end, right as you reach in, getting ready for your selection. Questions about the brochure? You've kind of seen samples, yours will look pretty close to that of all the school cars and photos and that kind of stuff, which we have from Selena. So we're ready to go on that. Questions about the brochure or the use of it, distribution of it?
Wayne, in looking at that, your experience with other boards, you know, today's the 30th. You're talking having that out and, you know, trying to have that distributed by the 6th. The we're talking basically a week. Do most boards get together, have a special meeting? Or do they just consensus?
Just just general consensus. And remember, the target audience is the applicants. So it's not, you know, something that I mean, it's important, but it's not necessary that we live or die over every comma and that kind of thing. We're concerned about the content. The the challenges and opportunities are very important. You want to get those right, because the applicants are going to write to those in their writing prompt. And that gives them a heads up to how to prepare and what they should be should be thinking about as they as they research the district and all of that. But no, it's usually not a meeting. It's usually Kevin, you and, you know, maybe Mark and Selena kind of looking it over. If you have suggestions, run it back to us, we'll get it, take another run at it, then maybe you can get it to the board. And and, you know, maybe it'll be ready, maybe not. If if you want to spend more time with it, we can do that. I think it's as important to get it out as it is to get it beautiful. I mean, it'll be beautiful, you know, getting that out is very important. But we'll spend as much time with it as you need. And if we don't make December 6th, we still got plenty of time. So we're okay, we're okay there. Other questions about the
So when would you think that it would go out to all of us as a board? Because you said like, we don't have to worry about the commas. I'm somebody who worries about commas and grammar and stuff. I don't want this going out with any grammar mistakes. I'm sorry.
There won't have any, it won't have any grammar.
Melinda, the rules about commas always change.
You know, an Oxford comma I'm okay with, but there's sometimes where if you repeat the word the twice or something right after each other, it drives me crazy.
I think we would, we would send it to probably Kevin, Mark and Selena by Thursday or Friday. And how you process it internally is up to you. And if it takes more time, it takes more time. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be concerned about that. I won't tell you how many drafts some districts have done, because I don't want to set the bar very high. Some districts have done very few drafts. I will tell you that, but we'll just see how it to see how it goes. We want to get, we want to meet your needs on this. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna rush it.
Thank you.
So it should be next, come in shortly, watch for it. And then Kevin, you can take the lead as to how you share it with the board. We, okay. And then the other kind of behind the scenes effort that you need to be thinking about Is as we get down close to people thinking about applying, which is going to happen, you know, right after the first year. We need some kind of a ballpark number on compensation. And by the time the job closes, we need to be pretty well ready to go on what the contract is going to be. So now that's a, that's one that might take a little bit of a work session with, you know, with the board, possibly with your attorney looking it over. If there's some things that you've been thinking that you wanted to address in the new superintendent's contract that might differ From Dr. Quinn's contract, and this is a good time to do that. We can help a little bit with that if you want some salary comparisons. ESD has been involved in that with some districts, if you're requested, or your business office, you know, can request that kind of material, too. So that's something kind of for you to have in mind as we go forward. It gets pretty important when candidates are on the bubble, thinking about applying or not, thinking about applying. Well, what's the compensation going to be? And they they can figure out, find out what Mark's compensation is, but they don't know if how that's going to relate to the new superintendent's compensation. So, you know, there's just some work to be done there that we don't want to leave till the last minute and then have you have to rush, rush it. It's kind of better to be thinking about that. And sometimes that takes a few conversations. Those are the two big ticket items now in your on your court. And then Mark and I'll be working on recruiting. As we move forward. Questions?
That number by like beginning of January or when?
Fairly early January, first week, second week of January, maybe.
Yeah, Melinda, we we need, when we reach out to people, when we get comments back, they ask us two questions usually. The first one is, what's the board like?
Beautiful, we're wonderful people.
Well, which is really, really important. If I'm looking at Ferndale School District, what's the board like? And they've probably seen you in a board meeting already, if they're really looking, or they will. And number two, what's the what's the compensation? You know, is it is it competitive? I mean, you you have, and we can certainly show you, you have districts in Waukesha County, in Skagit County, in Sohomish County. Similar sizes to your district where I I think you'll be surprised about how much the superintendents are making now. It surprises Wayne and I, it's a lot more than we made, I can guarantee you that. But you got to be competitive. You've got to be competitive to attract good candidates. And there's, there are other jobs open now, too. So and and there, there's some competitive salaries out there. So we we would be happy to help you with that.
Speaking of being competitive, I know last year there was like a third of the superintendents in this ESD that retired. Do you know what it's like this year?
Well, not, I I do know, I can tell you what it's like right now.
Oh, yeah, like right now. Oh, yeah, like right now. How many are, how busy is it with the superintendent searches out there?
Well, well, we have in our ESD, we have three going on right now, just Wayne and I do in this ESD. And and I'm trying to think, is there any others?
Yeah, you could add Marysville to that. So that's four right in our ESD.
Yeah.
And room, the rumor mill has another three or four.
And there's thirty six districts total, right?
Thirty five, but yeah, yeah, thirty five. Yeah. So it's, it's, you know, there is some competition out there. Let's be honest. But you guys are ahead of the curve. You really are. Your timing is really, really good to get a good pool and to get some, you know, to get some good fruit off that tree. And a reminder is you only need one. You only need one. And and you, there will be some good candidates, but but we need to, you know, we just need to kind of get our ducks in order here. It's no, no real urgency, although, you know, this, if we have a general idea on the salary, that the sooner the better. I guess I'll put it, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other questions for us? All right. Well, I think you're about halfway through your agenda. So good luck.
Yeah. Well, welcome to the school board, Stephen, Peggy.
As well start at the high end of the range.
They, they, they can't all be like this. Come on, come on. They're not all like this. So.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't gotten to school board appreciation month yet. So, hey.
That's, that's January, right?
Exactly.
Well, we appreciate. You'll feel a lot better in January.
We'll be sure and share that with you in January.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you in December too. So and it's not even December yet. It's the end of November. So thank you for your time tonight and being patient with us. Okay.
Thank you both gentlemen, and thank you for being patient with us as we work through the earlier part of the agenda. We'll be looking for that brochure and we'll get on that and get back to you as well as having, starting to have some discussion about the salary portion of things too. So thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Good night, everybody.
Have a good night. Okay, with that done, we will go ahead and bounce back to item five point zero two, which is the receiving of the monitoring report for results policy two point six, the arts. For this, I'll turn it over to Faye and Kelly, but just a reminder to everyone. These are the monitoring reports under our governance policy or coherent governance policy that we get. Typical protocols, we get one report presented to us each month. That report, we will have time to read and then discuss the following month and then the month after that. So two months later, it shows up on the consent agenda to approve. With the changing of the the board somewhat, we have both report the monitoring report for the operational expectations policy four. And then this report that we'll receive tonight that we'll be discussing at next month's meeting. Yeah, Melinda.
We also have the social studies one too. So we have three.
Yeah, there's three. Sorry, I forgot about that one. So we'll have those. So at this point, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Kelly and Faye to present the monitor report two point six.
Thank you, Kevin. We have uploaded two point six on Board Docs and we will have Jackson. If you need a hard copy delivered, we will have Jackson deliver it for you. But if you have any questions or need, like I said, need help getting it delivered to you, let me know. We'll get that taken care of.
On the same note, for this, now that we'll have three reports in hand, can we maybe not have one for December? Like maybe we discuss two of, like one of them in two weeks at our December meeting and then the next two at the next one or something like that, just. Three reports to look at by the December meeting now.
And December is the succession plan. I can't remember the number, policy number.
Oh, it's a short little one. Yeah.
It it's a short one and and hopefully, I know it's a lot to to go on, but hopefully if we can keep ourselves on track because COVID did kind of put us a little behind. But the succession one should be fairly.
Well, if we get that one in December, we discuss succession in January. I'm kind of thinking of what we're going to be discussing in two weeks in December because each of these reports, I think, are like at least thirteen pages, not counting the appendix.
Right.
So if we do all for him, which is fine, I'm just saying, start reading now, people.
Yeah, don't wait till the night before.
Right.
It would probably, it would probably be pretty reasonable to have the discussion of two point six in January.
Yeah, maybe that would make sense to do the social studies and OE four next month and then do the results, the two point six and the succession in January.
Yeah, let's get, get, keep the reports coming, but allow you guys to kind of catch up more gradually.
Yeah, no, I I'm all for that. Okay, so any questions for Faye or Kelly? It's not speaking our, you know, forever hold your peace. You can always contact them at any point if you do have questions.
Actually, I have a question for you, if that's okay. So I'm looking at these packets that we had for the the other items and like their checklist, their things that papers that we have to fill out. I have no idea how you go about doing this. Who do I come to to find out how you go about filling out one of these forms?
The, as far as on the the policy reports that we just got. Um, you can certainly, I'm happy to answer any questions about that, as I'm sure Melinda would be, or even Jesse. But yeah, not a problem at all. And if just talk to me at some point and we can set up, if nothing else, we can meet and do it as long as it's just two of us and not more than that, just to go over the process.
Okay. For kind of like public knowledge, though, as far as these big old long reports, you've got your cover sheet that has your commendation, recommendations, other notes, like things that you see like might be a problem where you need to put more attention to or something that, oh, my gosh, you guys are doing phenomenal job on this. Put that all on the cover sheet and that's what you turn into the chair. And then they consolidate them and then it's put into the minutes the next month. And that was goes in the consent agenda where we say we accept those things.
Okay.
All of this stuff on all the other pages where there's the little box next to it. That's kind of your personal notes to keep track of. Do you think it met expectations or not, didn't meet expectations? So I put my Xs on things, I highlight stuff, I write notes. And then when I'm putting my synopsis together, it only is the front sheet that anybody else gets.
Receives. Okay. And so essentially, we go back and we watch the previous meetings when they presented the the reports and we take notes and we fill out these sheets and then we.
Well, there's not really a presentation of the report. They give you the written report like just now where they said, here you go, two point six.
And you read through it and make your notes on the cover. Okay, thank you.
And then we discuss it next month. And so then if there's anything that came up that you're like, I want to talk about this, why are we, or whatever, then that's next month.
Okay, thank you.
And in it, as you go through it, and I don't know if you've had a chance, most of it is fairly straightforward in looking at, do we meet the expectations, the interpretations? And then again, we will have the full discussion, you know, at the next meeting. Basically, it's just to give us some time to look at it. And if there are certain questions, then we can ask those at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Cool. Good. Any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item six point zero two, which is Resolution fifteen dash two zero two one, which is an emergency declaration related to the atmospheric river event. All the rain that we've all been enjoying. I am a native Washingtonian. I love the rain, but even I'm getting to the point where I think we've had enough. And certainly based on the reports I'm hearing, the schools had enough. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mark, I think.
Yeah, so we've had more than enough. So the, this is in response to conversations with our insurance company and our, as soon as we, when we had the first initial atmospheric river flooding event, we had water in the CTE building, quite a lot of it, more so than we ever had before. It's, it's, that building has been susceptible over the years for, you know, seasonal flooding. If we get really bad rain, we will get some water in the the first few classrooms on the north end of that building. This particular event, we had water throughout the entire, the entire building. In fact, the the contractor that came in did the assessment. So about ninety five percent of the building was actually impacted by impacted by water. So Mammoth Cruise, everything, they did a great job cleaning it out, getting the water out of the building, bringing in the fans, the humidifiers and and drying out the carpet, floors and kind of taking care of things. But there is the potential that there is some moisture behind into the walls in the first bottom three to six inches. There is some, the the drywall is still testing with some moisture. So in order to stop any secondary problems, as in, you know, eventual mold growth or more extensive rot, we need to get that cleaned up. So we would like to start that process quickly as soon potentially is as early part of December. Probably a week after next, since tomorrow's December. In order to do that, we have to, we, you, the board needs to authorize an emergency, declare an emergency in the district. You're able to do that because the Wacom County has actually been declared an emergency because of the flooding. And what that allows us to do is actually bypass the bidding rules, the bidding laws, the bidding, bidding policies of the district, which would delay the process at least six weeks. And depending on what's happening in the area, potentially even longer than that with the other local contractors, it'll be do cleanup work throughout the county. So basically what this does is it authorizes us to bypass our bid policy in order for the work to get done, started faster than it would otherwise if we went through the bidding procedure. Now, the good part about that is the, we're actually, this is covered under our insurance policy. So we are actually working with the insurance company to secure contractors and pay for the work. So we've actually, we've also been in contact with FEMA. We'll be filing a FEMA claim for things that aren't covered by the insurance along with the rest of the county. So we've got a twenty five thousand dollar deductible that is our responsibility for the the first part of the work. The other million to million and a half that the projection is that will cover, that it will take to to clean up that building will be covered by the insurance company. So this is basically a expedition, an exp, an expediting process that we're asking you to go through, to be able to get this done faster. So what questions do you have about that?
Hey, Mark, I have a question.
Yeah.
So you stated that historically, there's been issues with flooding occurring in the past. And so my question would be, is there any work going to be done about mitigating this ever happening in the future? You're talking about cleanup. I totally understand that. But what are we doing to mitigate this that never again?
That's a super question. So we actually, prior to this event, actually did some mitigation, took some mitigation steps in order to kind of secure against flooding this winter due to construction or just natural seasonal seasonal flooding. So we put a little curb across there. We cleaned out the drains. We put in a larger pump in the area in front of the door that normally floods, which was working brilliantly up until this last event. So the seventy three gallon a minute pump that we installed couldn't keep up with the water just because it was so extraordinary. And the rest of the building flooded because we'd never seen anything like this. It was coming from other areas. So what part of the FEMA process is that we can actually apply for funding for mitigation to prevent future impacts. So we will be going through the process of seeking funding in order to be able to do some mitigation. We've also, just from a practical standpoint, we've been talking to the architects and the contractors about when we reslope that area from the news with the new school going in, how we can do so to kind of keep water away from the building and try to make it flow better direction, if at all possible. One of the other things that's going to happen is the the utilities for the CTE building are fed from boiler room that is across the little parking lot area between the, it's on the back of the of the gym or the back of the library, the old gym. And there's a underground utilidor that basically feeds the the CTE building. When we break that tie, right, we're going to stop using, when we demo the old vein in that boiler room, then we'll basically seal off that utilidor. So that won't be a source of water anymore, which is one of the kind of the major culprits that we're having right now. Because that filled with water then had a had an avenue into the building. So there's a few layers of of mitigation that we'll try to try to put in place. One of the the big things is that building is no longer going to be used for instructional purposes after the new school gets completed. So we want to get things cleaned up. We want to make sure it's safe. We'll make sure it's usable. But we probably don't want to go to heroic measures, you know, for a once every two hundred year flood for a building that we're not planning on using for really much other than storage.
Didn't we vote a year ago to use it for Golden Eagle Academy?
Yeah.
So my concern with that is we, okay, so they made the plan for the new high school. And at that time, they thought that building was going to be gone. So the new high school goes on what used to be a field which would soak up water. And now we are going to be using this building for, not forever, but we did kind of commit with that vote for Golden Eagle Academy for.
You're right. We do have a few classrooms in use there. Yep.
So I would really like to know that the designers of the building, not just like a sloping and everything, but is this going to need more like drain underneath? And because you've got a whole field that's no longer there soaking up water.
Well, yes and no. I mean, the drainage is going to be far superior to anything we had there before in terms of, because that now.
I I agree with that, but that building is going to be there. And when it was originally designed, it wasn't designed thinking that that building was going going to be there. So now, I mean, my, as, what's the word where you tell people like conflict of interest potentially? My husband works in groundwater type stuff. And I asked him the other night, does that change things if the building's now there? And he's like, yeah, the drainage you design potentially differently. So just like that, somebody to look at that, to make sure.
They are, we've already had conversations with the architect and the contractor about that.
Okay.
They had their engineers up looking at it while it was still flooded so they could understand the scale of the impact.
Yeah. I don't know if it's going to be every two hundred years, though. It's like, just please don't happen in the next ten years or whatever.
Other questions regarding that? I mean, yeah, and I think, you know, part of it, there's definitely some water, but if we can get better drainage, I know at least part of what we've been dealing with at our house is just everything is so saturated. So whether there's a building there or not, that field wasn't going to absorb any more water because there was just no, there's nowhere for the water to go. But I think it is important that as part of that process, we do everything we can to, you know, and it sounds like those steps are 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 going on.
Yeah, my other question that I had, because there's nine classes that are in the building now, I think, or something like that. Peggy and I both went and looked yesterday and and talked to some of the teachers that were impacted. And one of the concerns that they had had was the insurance had said that they're going to have to stage and kind of do it in a third of the building, then a third of the building, a third of the building. And this is a pretty. And this is a pretty stressful event, obviously, and some of the classes have a lot of equipment, like the biology class or the. Um, you know, that computer design class. We have the holidays coming up, but that's only two weeks. So I was wondering how we're going to stage classes, where they get to go, where it won't impact. The learning for the students and then also be as stress-free as possible for the teachers who have to move their classrooms. Or feel like they have to move out and back in this and everywhere.
So the logistics, we had a, we actually met with the um contractor uh today. Um, this afternoon, um, to go through kind of the plan, uh, or at least the rough outlines of what they have as a plan right now. Uh, we're still waiting for the results of some additional testing. Um, before we can fully um say what the plan will be. Um, their best thinking right now is that it would be a phased approach. Um, and what that allows you to do is only impact, only impact four or five classes at a time. Uh, versus the entire building. So they were looking at three phases. Like for classrooms and two and five and one. Um, for four to five weeks. And this, it's a big cleanup job. Um, but that's also one of the reasons we're doing more testing to find out what the situation is. And we've got some research to do. Um, to find if we, how if we can time things of more um. Uh, a less impactful way.
Yeah, I think the communication of, I mean, we don't know the answers right now, and it might take a little while to know the answers. But the communication to them of like, this is what we know and. Because some of them were saying, you know, like, I can teach around that, I'll just do a different, you know. Chapters or whatever at this time, but I can see how it'd be stressful not knowing what's coming and.
Exactly, and that's why we're actually trying to gather information. So we can present facts to them and give them actual information versus people working from partial or incorrect information.
Yeah.
Um, which unfortunately is the case right now, people got a little bit of information or some information that isn't fully accurate. Um, which never helps the situation. So we've asked for some additional information, we've asked for some additional testing. Um, we're gathering more information, we've got plans to uh gather up the information, touch base with the uh high school administration. Um, share the information, find out what the impacts would be, what our options are. Um, and then we will be sure to communicate with staff and involve them in the conversations. I don't think, if 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 we have to do this cleanup during the school year, it's going to be disruptive. There's no way around that. It's it's just how it's going to be.
Yeah, and yeah. And I would assume it would have to be, if we're going to be doing it during the school year rather than wait for summer, right?
Well, that's that's part of the testing we're doing, to find out and talk to the the hygienist who came through and did um provided the initial report. You want to get some follow-up information to find out, to confirm that, yes, that is indeed true. That we need to do it sooner than later and and we can't wait till, um, you know, and space it out over winter break, spring break.
And then you get to find the contractors, because everybody else is replacing everything all around Waukam County.
Right, and that's one of the reasons for working quickly, and that's the, our insurance company has got somebody on board that can do it.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah, but it's just a matter of of uh getting all the information coordinated and figuring out what it means. Because there is also part of that building. Um, you know, the the age that building was constructed, um, it has asbestos. In the, in the, in the building, so there's going to be some uh asbestos mitigation that is going to take place. Um, as part of the, as part of the cleanup. So that complicates things um even more. So it's part of the, part of the additional testing to make sure we're hundred percent knowledgeable about where all of it is. And what materials contain it. So. Yeah, there's still, still information being gathered to make sure we protect everybody's safety.
And this, we've been talking about the CTE building, but this um res- or resolution declaration, I can't remember what they're all called. Declaration, it covers for the performing arts building as well.
Yep.
Because it's like carpet.
Yep, the 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 recommendation at this point is carpet cleaning. Uh, from the, from the hygienist is is what they've come up with for testing there. Um, the auto shop had a, about a six-foot drywall section. Um, that needs to be, uh, needs to be addressed there. Um, and the um, uh, some uh. Redoing of the of the flooring in the um aquaculture. But that's a non, that's just a, it's a paver flooring that just got buckled. That can get corrected and fixed, it's not a, um, other than a trip hazard, it's not a um any other safety concern.
Mark, will will the uh, will the bids come back as time materials or will it typically be a a?
Yeah, it's going to be, um, it's going to be built on a time and materials basis.
Does that worry you at all, or?
And, you know, i- i-
Have an open checkbook kind of thing?
Well, kind of, and you know, the only thing that makes me, I I feel a little bit better about it because our. Our cost is capped at at basically the the cost of our deductible. Um, and the insurance companies typically watch their uh dollars pretty tightly. Um, and I think they have a relationship with the, with the contractor, so um. It's kind of a social agreement, you know, they don't want to bite the hand that feeds them. Um, so I think, I know one of the, one of the items that they were getting costs on, they, the insurance company said they wanted two bids from the. The contractor that they're hiring. So they're monitoring the dollars pretty closely still. Um, even though it's a, it's a time.
For our deductible, is that something that if FEMA did grants, would FEMA cover the deductible, or is that like?
We're applying for that, yes. Yes, it's it's an allowable expense. Now, our experience with FEMA is you work really, really hard. Um, and get a fraction of what you, um.
Put in thirty thousand dollars of work, can you get fifteen back?
If, that would be great. So, yes, we're going through that process, we're going through the FEMA process, we're submitting everything. Um, and we will um hope it works out for us.
And the, like, the deductible that comes out of our reserve fund, or we have something in the general fund that is for insurance deductibles? Or where does that money come from?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a uh, money for um insurance in the budget.
Cool, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? And if not, the chair will entertain a motion.
I just had one question. Yeah, I just had one question. Okay, so the only thing that needs to be done in the performing arts building is the carpet cleaning? Because.
That's what they're telling us.
Okay, because, I mean, obviously, you know, the bond includes upgrades to that building too. And I just was wondering if if it was something that would be better, you know, replacing the carpet at this point. I mean, is it? You know, if there are things that are going to be covered under bond work, would it make sense? I don't know, I just was wondering if that, if there's any overlap of.
The carpet's not in the bond, and it's actually fairly, for by district standards, it's fairly new carpet.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And that was the only issue there. I, yeah, so most of it was the CTE building, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so again, if there's no other questions, then the chair will entertain a motion.
I will move to adopt resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. Emergency, emergency declaration for the atmospheric river event as attached here and made a part of these minutes.
Okay, it's been moved to adopt resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, the emergency declaration, atmospheric river event is attached. Here and made part of these minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, resolution is adopted. Thank you. That then takes us on to item six point zero three, which is a report on the capital projects bond. Enter that alternate over to Mark.
So we're building a new high school.
I had noticed that.
Yeah.
I saw that building that you were talking about, you know, looks like it's going to be taller than the old one.
It's a little taller than the old one. So it's, um, you know, we've, we've lost some, um. Days of uh productivity, um, or the, or due to the flooding and and the crew's inability to get here. Or to work safely. Um, but they're still moving along. They've actually got uh concrete on the uh second and third decks, uh floors. Um, not completely uh uh completed yet, but it's, it's um pretty exciting. Um, nice view from the fir- third floor. It's uh, pretty cool. Uh, they're making, making headway, the um, the, the uh gym. And the um locker room area, the kitchen, the steel is all up there as well. Um, they're putting the steel across the um, in the commons. So the the uh frame of the building is actually really taking shape. It's, you can really kind of get a good sense for um. Uh, the scale and and what the building is going to look like. So. Um, beam uh raising, sorry, that didn't work out for those of you that wanted to attend. Um, and they kind of got uh jammed up with the weather and trying to keep schedules. Um, as tight as they could, they kind of uh needed to hang that on the, on a short notice, so. Uh, some of the kids were able to take it out and watch, and it, it actually looks pretty cool. If you're able to um. Look at the uh website and see the pictures, um, you can see the, the beam was painted uh blue and gold and has a flag. Uh, flying from it, and you can see all the, all the kids signed it, so. Um, a little bit of fun um around that, so.
I tried to get my son to go down and sign it, because he does running start, and he couldn't get down, and I was like, please, for your mother, he wouldn't do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions for Mark? Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for the weekly updates that you're continuing, and always appreciate the pictures and such involved with those. And letting the community know what's going on with that, the project and where we are at with it, so, okay. So that takes us to item uh seven, which is the sharing. And first on the docket is item seven point zero one, which is student board member sharing. So for that, Kong, do you have? An update for us or things to tell us about?
Hello, um, I would just like to welcome Miss um, DePiano and Mr. Chow to the board. And um, yeah, today, I don't know if I have a lot, but there are some questions that um. Lots of students are asking, I mean, I think this is like one of the questions that we've all been asking, um, will there be school tomorrow? Um, yeah, so uh, if Mr. Deepak can answer me that, or someone can answer me that.
At this point, I cannot tell you a hundred percent for sure, but um, we're sure hoping so.
That's good, Nick. Um, the next thing is on the currently, what is happening at the heart current high. The high school is that we are decorating for Christmas, because it's coming soon, the holiday. So we just want to get everyone's spirits like, you know, up and lifted before the winter break. So, uh. Another thing is, oh, I was, I want, after going to the WASTA conference. One of the things that I've learned from talking with the other school member from the other districts is that um. Their student representative, like, having um. Non, um, non-binding advisory votes, which I did not know. Um, and after reading our websites about, you know, the role of the school boards and all of that stuff. Um, our suit, like, the role of student repres- representative also have that. So I would just, you know, bring it out here, and we just bring it up about, like, when you guys vote for policies, like, maybe me and Ja- Jazzy. The other student representative can also, like, vote on it. It's not like an official vote, but just, you know, have the student's voice be heard. So. And. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to talk about, um, that I've talked with, well, I went to a equity conference. In WASTA, and I, you know, talked this with, like, the others to uh school board members, is that with student voice. Um. It is important to, you know, be at the school and just talk to the students, like, um, because I know. For a fact that, um, I have no idea who were my school board representative were, until I joined the school boards. And I, and I can tell you that most of the student in our school have no idea who you are, so. Um, so like, for like policies or what you were wondering, if it has like impacted those students. I would say, like, to just go into the school and ask them about it, if the, you know, the policy even is active, or like, how has it impacted them? Um, for me, like, as a student representative, I can only represent so much of, like, the students, I can't present everyone. So, um, it would be, you know, really good to, you know, just go in, have some fun conversations with the students, especially with, like, you. Um, your, like, new school boards, um, come in, you know, get familiar with the student, our culture, and, you know, with everyone. So, yeah, um, yeah.
Commenting on that, Kong, because when I was elected to school board in November twenty nineteen, like. Four months before everything went to.
Yeah.
Went away, it's gone. Um, I got to go to a couple schools or whatever, like, my dream of going into, you know, the classrooms and visiting and such. It didn't really happen because of COVID, and now that we are moving beyond that and we can. Maybe start introducing those sorts of things. I guess I would ask, like, the administration team or. Um, teachers or whatever, I would like to come. Um, but, you know, it's, I don't want to, I don't want to pick where to go type of thing. It's like, where do, where am I needed, you know? If somebody, if somebody's like, you know what, I'd like, I'm available. Or, I can make myself available.
We actually, the board, the board actually used to have um scheduled visits. Um, to the schools, so we would actually pre-arrange to. Um, everything has to be pre-arranged, you can't just show up at the, at the schools.
I won't, I promise.
So, um, we would pre-range a, a tour, and the principal would come and and do a bit of a presentation. Talk about what they had going on in the buildings, and then go out and tour a couple of classrooms and and kind of see things. Um, underway, so. That is probably something, if the board is interested in in reviving something and putting something in place, I would suggest we do a um. A bit of a work session on that and come up with a um, uh, an idea that um would work.
Yeah, I, I mean, historically, a- and I can talk historically, because now I'm the old person on the board. Um, we used to have.
Experience, not old Kevin, experience.
Yeah, that's it, yeah, mature or something like that. Um, it used to be that we had reports from basically each school throughout the year. And we would alternate between a report from the school and going out to visit schools. And, you know, with the change of the the coherent governance and with some of the changes in some of the other reports and looking at. Looking more globally as opposed to hearing what. Skyline was doing, or what Cascadia or Vista Horizon, or, you know, you name the school, you know, now by looking at. The, the reports we're getting, the goal was to get a more universal, um. Look at what was going on, you know, from start to finish, as opposed to hearing about what was going on in the elementary schools for reading, and then. There was a disconnect, because you didn't hear what was going on at the uh secondary schools. Um, so I, I think it would be a good thing to have a, a uh study session to kind of go through, how can we? Put the big picture together and, because it, it was always a good opportunity to go into the schools and kind of see. Hands-on, firsthand, what was going on, what was happening, and how the education was happening.
Yeah, and I don't think any of us have a student who's on campus every day. Hmm, so I think it's pretty important we get there.
Yeah, and and I've, I've heard from a couple of teachers that they really miss having that. That they really invite that to happen, that they want board members to come through. And not in a herd, but to actually sit down and take some time and see what's, what they, what they work with in the classroom. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, um, because one of the thing that um has happened when with like the super and, um, when, um. Um, the superintendent was like interviewing, uh, not, not the superintendent, the. The, uh, people who were finding the superintendent were interviewing the students and also the communities. Um, you know, I was in that pool of students who were, you know, giving inputs for the newest, uh, you know, finding new superintendent. And do like, everyone has been like talking, like, most of those ideas I have. Like, I was like shocked that I have never thought of that before, because everyone has so many different ideas. Because everyone has so many different ideas and every student is like their own individuality that, like, you know, they they have ideas. And also things that they can input and I like, that's like just amazing, like, you know, as like. In a per- like as a student, like when you talk about um, you know, we're here to like just learn and, you know. To be in the future, to like input for society, but like, one of the things that I know uh that I learned from, you know, being in a Wasta. Is that students are smart and I I know that. So, yeah, so, you know, just go into your the schools and just get familiar familiar with like the students and the teachers. Um taught there, um the uh the last thing I want to talk about is um. About um stu- the the stuff about masking and also opportunity for student. Because I remember from last um school board meeting, we were talking about how um. Like what are the ways of like the school to provide to students, like, you know, um. Time to like be unmasked and just, you know, have the time for like themselves and not be, you know, controlled by, you know, wearing a mask or something. And we were talking about how like um there are like mask time or like free mask time, like during class period and all that stuff. Um. Like for that issues alone, what um the high school is experiencing is, is it? The lack of not giving the students the opportunity to, you know, having a, you know, free mask period. Or just go outside and, you know, just relax, but is the fact that when student go outside and not wearing the mask. Some student leave the school campus and, yeah, that's just one of the things that's happened impacting our high school. It's just student leaving during class hours or, you know, since they're outside, it just kind of, um I don't know. Don't want to go back inside and like lots of issues other happen, like, I don't know. Um like if we could have, you know, something or like a policy or like. Um something going on to help like the student, uh to help like the teachers like have a guideline to like when or how. Student would, you know, behave during, you know, those situations where um they are allowed to have the opportunity, you know, to have. Free time and no mask time, but, you know, actually go back in and have actual education time. If you know what I mean, or.
So so the kids are going outside with for their free mask time. And instead of coming back after, you know, ten minutes or whatever the time is, they're just leaving.
Yeah.
Okay, so that seems like that's a policy already, it's like you're expected to be.
So, yeah, and also there are many students who are nowadays coming late into classrooms. And it's just like when parents are talking about, you know, how do you have, you know, student, you know, having free mask. Or like have no, you know, have freedom to have, you know, their choices, like when, like, I want to ask, you know, the parents to like. When the school give them that op- gives student the opportunity, um so that should be responsible for it, you know. Like instead of, you know, when you have the opportunity and responsibility to, you know, have a free mask time, it's not that you're allowed to just leave campus. So, yeah.
I wonder how much of that is the attendance, because this year's attendance has dropped and how much. Is the, yeah, I don't know.
And I I know that Kong, the high school administration have been talking about uh those exact things. So what are the consequences for people just taking off? I mean, what happens?
Um currently from what, well, I've been work, oh, well, I wouldn't say I've been working, but like I've been talking to, you know, the principals. And, you know, many of the administrators and you um, they have been keeping track of, you know, who are late. Who are arriving, you know, or uh not uh um who are arriving late, who aren't showing up and who are like ditching schools. And most of the time, um they're just going into the office and talking to the um principals, like finding out what is going on. You know, why are you uh like, why are just that student behaving this way? Or like uh some like s- situations that was going on. And one of the thing that I heard from um the principal is that, like. She found it really weird and, you know, shocking too, is that the students that are like super behave, like behave well. The schools like throughout like last year, this year, like nowadays are acting, you know, like. The those students just, you know, like misbehave and we just want to find out why is that happening, right? It's just like our high school just have been like upside down lately and I don't know, like that just happened weird. Like I'm in the same boat, I'm like, what is going on with the students?
Think a lot of it's just coming back after COVID. I mean, this is kind of a a national thing that is happening and there's been a year where school was so different. And a lot of kids just really didn't have the connection to school or maybe it was digital, didn't have a connection to school. And so they kind of lost that tether. And this year, you know, we've got it back, but it also is kind of, maybe some kids have had last year where the tether wasn't as strong. And so they're like, eh, it doesn't matter, we know it matters, but it's gonna take a while to. To build that connection and that tether back. And, you know, hopefully it'll be stronger after, we have MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support, which we're using S R funds. Which were supposed to be used for, you know, coming back after COVID and putting it towards something that can help kids come back. And hopefully, I mean, I would think the whole time you were talking about, you know, they're talking in the office and saying how, why is this happening? I'm like, I bet you the MTSS coordinators are all over this, so, support them.
Yeah, um yeah, that's all I have for today, it's just everything have been like weird and busy at the same time, so.
Well, thank you, Kong, so we'll move on to the elected board members. Anything to share as far as, go ahead, Melinda.
So I'd like to share, as you guys know, there was the Washington State School Directors Association Conference was not last weekend, but the weekend before. Um I want to say that my kind of takeaways from it this time, I had two. And the the first one is after we've heard Kong sharing and everything that he says. Kong and I carpooled down together. And so we had, you know, two hours down, two hours back, and he was at the conference as well and, you know, we saw each other during the conference. And I was in the same um heard that thing about student advisory votes at the same time he did. And I think both of us were like, yes, because. Having student school board members, a lot of times through the agenda, they can be, you know, it's pretty quiet. And then at the sharing, we get, you know, a whole bunch of information and sharing from them and it's very useful. But I think that advisory vote before we take a vote on something, to just turn to our student school board members, any of us can do it. And say, what do you think about this? How would this impact kids? Or, you know, what what's your thoughts on it? I think would be fantastic because let me tell you, Kong has a lot of good ideas and a lot of good insight and I learned a lot from him. My second takeaway from the Wasta meeting was when I went two years ago and I was a new board member, our whole board was there. And I really felt like I got to know people a little bit, you know, who's who and got to know some names and it. I really missed having the other board members there. I mean, I know you guys, we were there like all virtually and here and there and I did text or called and talked to, I think, each of you during it. Maybe not you, Steve, I'm not sure, um but uh really missed that. So, you know, hopefully next year we can have. Or throughout this year, it doesn't have to be Wasta, but just a little bit more, you know, building a team together, so, anyway, that was my takeaways.
Well, I'm I'm really sorry I missed the the Thursday, I really wanted to be down there for the boot camp. But the powers that be didn't cooperate with me at all, things just didn't work out, so. And then and then I was wondering about, you know, you guys traveling even down there after all of the rain. Um but you didn't have any problems.
No, and we saw the slide on I five, it was pretty cool.
Yeah, okay, well, my son, my son got delayed by that, had to go around checking that drive, so it was not cool.
No, not cool at that time.
Not cool at all, no, and then and then his then his bus got hit by a truck. Yeah, it was, it was a, yeah, he was um, he had saved up and took a trip to Germany. Because he had a window of opportunity that he could use that he would lose because he had a friend over there, he could go around with it, so. He he went and had his dream vacation, you know, and then when he got back, he took the airport or shuttle back up. And it was right after the landslide, so they had to turn his bus around. I think he said they routed it down, checking it drive, so he was already an hour, hour or so late getting home. And then he was like, okay, you know, you come and get me because I'm almost there and then it was like a text a few minutes later, it's like, no. We just got hit by a truck, so.
That's when you learn not to ask how can this get worse.
Yeah, 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 don't even, yeah, so. So I'm glad you didn't have that kind of fun.
So, anything to add, Steve?
Um I could just say that uh I was inspired by the inspirational speakers that spoke. Um they have a lot of good information to share and and experiences and stuff. It was uh it was a lot of information to take in, probably overwhelming. Um it would be something that you would probably want to go back to and go back through. I'm understanding that they provide uh a lot of training courses and and provide videos of what they placed down there. That would be uh probably a good thing for a person to review some of that. Because like I say, they throw a lot of information out and uh it's it's tough to absorb a lot of that. But uh no, it was, it was a good experience, I'm glad I attended, unfortunately it was virtual uh because of. Uncontrollable matters for me, but um I I I don't regret it and I would recommend it to anybody. And I look forward to reviewing some of the information, so anyway, that's that's about what I got to say about that.
Well, well, I would definitely have to echo a lot of what's been said, one in the regards to Melinda. You know, having experienced it with all the board being there, it's definitely a team building beneficial time and. Um feeding off of each other as you hear those things and interacting about them and just experiencing the energy of it. Um so it is, it it was disappointing that just the way it worked out, it wasn't that normal experience. But it was closer to normal than the year before, um so we're making progress back. Um I think in regards to the student voice comments, definitely before COVID hit. Um we certainly, I think, had more of that, uh we didn't take any official student votes or anything. But certainly uh there was a lot of that question, what do you think, what do you think on this, how do you think this will affect students? And would be nice to get back to that. Um was interesting to have video somewhere of our student board members a few years back. I think before Melinda and Jesse's time even, um where they became sort of the. Uh they weren't the presenters at a meeting, but they sort of overtook this one school's presentation. Because everyone was asking them questions and they became the uh center of the attention of the after and the discussion time. So it was quite a quite fun to be kind of like proud parent, board member, parents or something, you know, you're watching your student members. Uh interacting and answering everybody's questions, that's kind of cool. Um as far as the board building, uh definitely as we go into our superintendent surgeon, as we go into the new year. Um Mark and I've already been talking about some of the Wasta possibilities of getting us together and doing some team building, some kind of onboarding. Um and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but we were talking about having Jackson send out. Uh a doodle poll is trying to figure out a date um where we could probably get together and looking at schedules and looking at. December being a short month because of the holidays, probably the first part of January, so be looking for that in your inbox and and definitely be. Responding so we can kind of find, try to find a date that works for everyone to get together.
Um I can just note that I have actually already sent that and a few people have responded, but um. Yeah, all of you could respond if possible and pick mo- multiple days if you're able to pick multiple.
Yeah, definitely if there's multiple days because it makes it easier to try and coordinate between everybody's schedule. Um and then we're having to coordinate potentially with Wasta their their people's schedule, so, okay.
And we have to come up with a salary number two.
Yeah, that will be working on, that'll probably be part of the conversation as well. So, Mark. Do you have anything to share?
The only thing I've got is the um, we are in the process, kind of a, one of the strange um. Uh rules that go around with uh running a uh ballot initiative. Um we are required to solicit uh folks to write the um pro statement in the voter pamphlet, but also the con statement. So we have been um advertising on our website, we've uh put notices out, we've emailed folks to written. Um statements in the past, um and so if the folks that are still listening or anybody who views this later. Is interested in writing the con statement for the voter pamphlet, um please reach out to uh Selena or myself. Um so we can get you uh listed for that, so, that's all I've got on that one.
Okay, anyone from the admin team? I'm seeing heads shaking, no, so.
Now, just a welcome to Steve and Peggy as well.
Thank you. Just um just a thirty second um thing we had um for the new board members back in June. We submitted to OSPI, our academic and wellbeing recovery plan. Um we'll give you a little more information um at the December meeting, but um no, the end of November, beginning December. Is the phase two um report, which is an attestation from the superintendent. Um so we'll, that's due by December seventeen, so we'll give you just a snapshot um at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Fay. So then that brings us to the consent agendas portion of our meeting, the consent agendas um for everyone to know. Are essentially routine items that the board has been um provided information with. There's the superintendent's consent agenda, which are items that are delegated to the superintendent um to take care of. But do require by policy board approval, these board consent agenda has items that are under the board's jurisdiction. And these are items because they are routine and have been provided to the board ahead of time, um are things that we can proceed to vote on. In one. Uh package deal as opposed to voting on each individually, um just as for Steve and Peggy's benefit. Um if there are items on there that at some point we need to take off and discuss uh individually, that can certainly be done as well. But most of the time they're routine, um and I always feel a little weird saying that because for those of us that have been on the board, they're routine. For you guys, they're new and and exciting, um certainly all this information is also available to the public on board docs. Um where you can see pretty much most everything that the board sees short of employee information. And so um at this point, the board will entertain or the chair will entertain a motion. To either accept the consent agendas or if there's any discussion.
I will make a motion to accept both the superintendent consent agenda and the board consent agenda. As attached here too and made a part of the minutes.
Okay, so it has been moved to accept the superintendent and board consent agendas as attached to here. And made part of the minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Okay, the consent agendas are then accepted. So at this time, the board will convene into a executive session for approximately thirty minutes to discuss personnel matters. No action will be taken during this session, um the board will reconvene into open session following the executive session. To take action on um the items from the executive session. Um so as a instructional thing for our new board members, um this does require us to leave this meeting. And Jackson sent you another link to the executive session, which um we will then join. This meeting will be left open. We'll go into the executive session. Once we are done conversing at that, the, getting the information that's being presented to us at that, then we will exit that meeting and come and rejoin this meeting. Okay, we'll help walk you through that if there's any issues or, or concerns. Um, but at this point, um, we can go ahead and leave this meeting and we will join each other momentarily in the executive session. Any questions before I leave out?
You have to tell how long we're going to be?
I said approximately 30 minutes.
Oh, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. No problem. Okay, I will see you all in executive session.
If I can find the appropriate email here.
Okay, so it looks like we're just waiting for Steve.
I'm not that old.
John knew when I was.
Like it when there's nine boxes and I can pretend that we're the Brady Bunch.
I see John and I see Kevin.
Oh.
I'm about that old.
That's romper room.
Okay, so it looks like we're just waiting for Steve.
We're going on six, over six hours.
I'm sorry about that.
No, no.
No, it's.
Nah, I'm.
Okay, I like your questions. I love your questions. I like having the discussion, so don't feel bad about it. And you know, you'll do it one month where you ask more and then I'll do it the next month.
So we'll go ahead and come back into session. And so that brings us, give me a second as I pull up our docs. So at this point, the we are back in session and discuss discussing the to term potential termination of six employees. And so is there any discussion?
We had a lot of discussion in executive. I think it's fine if we discuss it here.
Do we, do we give reasons for our votes or do you just vote? I mean, does this do reasons make any?
Essentially, at this point, I think it's important that, you know, as far as for those in the the audience that are listening, that we're not privy to the executive session, one of the hallmarks of the executive session is we can discuss these things. We can discuss all the various items and the reasons or an against termination, but we cannot take a vote. No vote was taken in executive session. No votes are taken in.
Yeah.
Session. And and partially the 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 talk I'm doing right now is both for Peggy and Steve's benefit, but also for those that are listening in the audience, because we do have some of the people that were speaking tonight still with us. But part of it is important to have the essentially to reiterate some of that discussion at this time, you know, so that people understand what our thinking is and what our reasoning is as we move forward to make that decision. I think it helps them to understand and understand, you know, I'm fine starting out the conversation in the sense that this is a no win situation. You know, we're sitting here with being put in a position that none of us ever. You know, we're sitting here with being put in a position that none of us ever dreamt or wanted to be put in where we've got opinions and arguments on both sides of the spectrum that make a whole lot of logical sense depending on your perspective and depending on how things are interpreted. And there really is no black and white answer. And that's what makes it difficult. You know, and so there you could sit and make an argument for termination against termination. But unfortunately, we can't sit there and make both arguments. We have to come as a school board. We either have to, you know, uphold the decision or go against the decision that was made by the administrative team. And the guidance that they were given and the decisions that they made based on that guidance that they were given. So. So don't everybody talk at once.
Well, in executive session, we had a lot of different opinions. I am comfortable saying that my opinion on this is one of the speakers tonight said that the bus drivers have 58 years experience cumulatively together with the Ferndale School District. And I don't take that lightly at all. These are, I spoke with one of them earlier this week. And he has been a bus driver for Ferndale School District about as long a time as my kids have been in the school district. So that's, I thank him for his service as a bus driver. But I also take very seriously keeping the work safe, the workplace safe for our staff. I know there's a lot of talk about, well, COVID doesn't affect kids, etc. In my opinion, and I'm only speaking for myself. The vaccine mandates and the choice of a vaccine or an exemption where just about everybody, almost everybody who asked for an exemption got one. Those choices are to reduce risk for our staff and to keep our staff staff safe. These employees had it had a choice that I understand is extremely difficult for them and they did not want to make, to have to make that choice. But I myself am thinking I need to keep the staff of Ferndale School District as safe as possible. And so that's my thought on it. And there were other thoughts that other people had that were different. So.
Yeah, um, uh. A thought that I had was, you know, we keep coming back to, we're supposed to do what's in the best interest of the children. And I think, you know, we're all thinking physical safety, you know. But there's also the idea that, you know, if this is an issue of personal freedom and you want to model the strength of your beliefs and standing up, you know, the 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 modeling of of character is also an important thing. You know, for children and 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 then in this day and age and and the way, you know, the crazy world we live in. I almost think it's of an extremely important thing that needs to be preserved. Is it in the best interest of children to, you know, to knuckle under when you hit adversity and, you know, I I I don't know. This is where I'm coming from. And 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 also, also, you know, I do believe there is an element of fairness to it. And and and, you know, where do you put your priorities? Okay. If if we don't test everybody because of cost and because we've decided, well, this is less of a risk than that. Well, I mean, I haven't seen the risk quantified, so I'm not comfortable with that. And I do think there is a fairness aspect to it, too. And I think, you know, maybe, you know, we all want all these wonderful things for our kids, but but could could the testing of everybody be a priority in order to make things fair? And that that's another thing that I'm looking at, thinking, you know. Because I I I don't believe it's quite fair. That's my personal opinion. And I don't, I don't, you know. I don't like the awkward situation that anybody's in. I mean, if I had my druthers, I'd be saying, okay, you know, go address the health department with this. You know, don't come to the school board, go address the health department. However, it's brought to us because we're the first, I mean, you know. They elected us to do this. And so and and we'll have differences of opinion and.
And I think I I think with that, you know, I agree, Peggy, I think they should. You know, people should express their concerns to the health department, but I also think they should express them to their legislative representatives, because part of the, part of the dilemma that this stems from is the whole legality of the mandates and such. And, you know, there are certain stipulations for mandates to be lawful under emergency situations. And the pandemic certainly initially wasn't a, an emergency situation. But after, you know, almost two years, has there not been enough time that the legislature could get together? And come to some sort of an agreement as opposed to it being a mandate, but actually legislated kind of rule. You know, that's, I don't want to get into the politics of it, but it seems like they've had enough time that they could do that. And so to put the the school boards, you know, across the state, we're not the only ones that are.
Yeah.
You know, putting, being put up to this challenge. And I I feel like are some of our other elected officials whose actual responsibility is in some of this interpretation and dealing are kind of kicking the can down the road to somebody else's camp. And that's, you know, no more fair to us than it is the decision that we're making about these people and their jobs.
I I echo Peggy's conversation, what she's saying. And there's there's no winning opera, you know, option here. This is a no win-win situation for anybody. This is so, and let me say, we're faced with very limited opera options. And to Kevin's point, the health department, you know, they're they're responsible for handing down these rules that we're supposed to abide by. And.
They suggest. They they.
They suggest. Yes, I stand corrected.
Sorry.
It's okay. Like you say, this, this is not it's, this is not a comfortable situation we put in. Anyway, I'm here to support the other members of the board. Community. And whatever is decided, it's in the best interest of the children, I believe.
Well, and and certainly I want to, you know, I appreciate those that have come and voiced their concerns, have voiced their opinions. The challenge being, you know, and the part that's always hard is, you know, we are elected to represent the community. But there's another aspect of the community. There's, you know, of 670 employees, you know, we've got less than 1% that have either had, you know, questions or problems with the the process of, you know, accommodations and testing and everything else. You know, and so I think we have to, you know, we represent all those 670 people are part of our community, too, and we need to represent all of them, you know. And and it's not, you know, the loudest voice is not always the majority. And so that I think we need to take into consideration as well. So at some point or at this point, you know, if there's further discussion, certainly happy to have that. Otherwise, the chair is open to a motion.
Do we have any more? Anyone?
Any more thoughts, Steve, Peggy?
I mean, this totally sucks, you know, um.
Yeah. I think that sums it up best.
Welcome to the school board.
Well, yeah, I knew it was gonna suck.
There, there are better times than this, too.
There are. Yeah.
I will make a motion to accept the termination suggestions as attached here, too.
Is this, can I, can I, can I ask a question? I'm sorry, I should have asked it earlier.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, since this involves determinations of several different people. You know, I mean, is this on an individual, one by one basis, or is this on a, I mean, or is it a package deal?
They're they're all individuals. If you have the same answer for all of them, if if that's Melinda's recommendation, you can do them as a package. If you have different answers on on them, then you, we can split them out.
Do you want to split them out, Peggy? We could split them out.
Uh, yeah, I would like to split them out.
Okay, um, I will make a motion to, can I say the names, John? Okay, I will make a motion to accept the recommendation for discharge for Ms. Bergman.
And it's been moved to accept the recommendation for the termination of Ms. Bergman. All those in favor. Mark, do I need to do this by actual voice or can I do it by voice? Or do I need to do a roll call vote?
Only if you're split.
Okay, well, let's start. We'll start with just a voice and then we'll go to a roll call vote if we need to. So it's been moved to accept the recommendation for the termination of Ms. Bergman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so motion to accept the recommendation for termination, Ms. Bergman passes. Okay.
So for the remaining five, do we want to split or do we want to keep those together?
I could go either way, but given that those all are of the same reason, it seems like it would be strange to say yea to some and no to the others.
Well.
But we can, I I.
If anybody wants to split. Is there any reason to split? Okay, I will make a motion then to accept the recommendations for termination for Mr. Shapen, Ms. Greenwood, Mr. Farm, Mr. Selby, and Adams. I can't, oh, shoot.
Ms. Adams.
Ms. Adams, I'm sorry.
Okay. So it's been moved to accept the termination of Mr. Shaven, Ms. Greenwood, Ms. Adams, Mr. Flum, and Mr. Shell, Selby. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
And abstentions? Okay. So motion carries. So to quote the words of a fellow board member, this sucks. You know, and I wish there was a better way of getting around it. I wish there was a different solution. And it's not, you know, it's not a decision any of us, you know, have taken lightly by any means. So I think at this point, you know, I wish I had the words to say, but there aren't any words to say. So if anyone has anything to say, feel free and otherwise, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Uh, I do have a question because I'm not really even sure what just happened. Does this mean we vote at a later date because we were tied or when there's a termination proceeding?
Yeah, is the termination, it, the vote was two for, one against, one abstention. So essentially, in that situation, the majority rules and the termination follows through.
Understood.
So.
Is it possible we could revisit the idea of everybody testing at a later date? Because that was my main reason.
Um, I I would have to defer that to I I'd have to look, because kind of becomes a, we can certainly discuss it, but it becomes a matter of of the the board's actions, again, the the division of board duties versus administrative duties. And it starts to get a little sticklish there as far as, you know, as we, as they talk about an orientation. You know, we are the the what, we are the the reason the the administration is the how. And so that would be us sort of stepping into the the how, but, you know.
Yeah.
Also is the safety, it's a a safety of fairness. It fits within our, you know, the interpretations of our policy.
Okay.
If the situation were to change hypothetically, would we hire these people back?
They would be eligible for rehire. There's nothing that would prevent that.
Okay.
In in the case, in the case of the five of terminations related to COVID, you know, I think that that would would hold true. I mean, you know, the the other termination had other reasons behind it. So I would say that that's probably not the case, but, you know, from what John told us, it doesn't sound like there's any issue. And and what was the the verbiage you used? A non-disciplinary termination? You know.
Well, it's based on the fact that they're no longer qualified for the for the job.
Yeah.
So if the qualifications change, like the vaccination changed.
No longer required. I think at some point in time, that that's a very possible outcome.
Hopefully.
Yeah, well, and and who knows with with what's going on right now as far as some of the legal challenges with some of the mandates and testing. It could very well change, but.
Or with Omicron.
Yeah.
It could go either way.
They could go, yeah, things could get worse, things could get better, who, you know. So.
I'm, my concern is going forward from this point in time. I mean, are they going to start treating influenza like this is every, is every respiratory disease, every easily, you know, communicable disease going to be treated? You know, using the same protocol? Are we going to be masking and distancing for the rest of our lives?
Let's hope not.
There, that that's the biggest challenge. And I think that's a question a lot of people are ans- asking. You know, there's also, I'll throw it out there. There's also the whole aspect of, you know, what if we come forth with a mandate for kids five to 12 to be vaccinated?
We're not talking about that tonight.
No, we're not talking about that tonight because I don't want to go there and, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
Um, but.
Hopefully that bridge will be moot before we get to it.
Hopefully, very mute. But I think that's where, again, a different group of elected officials needs to step in and start making some some group decisions as opposed to mandates, because that's.
I absolutely agree with you, Kevin.
So I would encourage, you know, I would encourage those that, you know, that have expressed concerns, you know, talk to your legislators. They're the ones that need to hear, you know, because they have the power to do something about it. We, you know, our hands are somewhat tied.
For every like complaint made, you know, Facebook or to a friend or something, send one to your legislator as well. It takes just as much time. And whether it's a complaint or support, whatever side you're on.
Yeah.
Like that's where. Like, that's where they need to hear from us. From everybody.
So.
All right. Do we have another meeting in another five minutes?
Probably, just, yeah.
Thank you, everyone. I wish we were ending on a happier note. Thank you, Steve and Peggy, for your, attending your first meeting. I will, hopefully the future ones will not be this heavy and will be full of more light things.
Well, there's only one way to go and that's up, right from here. This is, this starts the bottom of the barrel, God.
That's, yeah.
I mean, I tell you from experience, just hope for better, but don't say it can't get worse.
Yeah, it's probably true.
Yeah, that's very true. Who would have expected?
Words of wisdom.
You know, last, was it last Christmas or the Christmas before when the train derailment by Custer happened? I remember getting that text from Dr. Quinn and Van, oh, it's a train derailment, it's just a train crash. Because of everything else that had happened that year. So it, it, it's gotta get better. It's gotta get better. It'll get better.
So. Okay, well, with all that, I will declare this meeting adjourned. And thank you, everybody. Appreciate the discussion, appreciate all the hard decisions I had to make.
So.